Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Effingham County Board of Commissioners, June 3rd, 2025 meeting. The time is now 5:02 PM. Now, clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Floyd is not present tonight. Commissioner Burdette?
Here.
Chairman Ryan?
Here.
Commissioner DeLoach?
Here.
Commissioner Helmly?
Here.
Commissioner Kiefer?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, clerk, we have someone for the invocation tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. Joining us to offer our invocation this evening is Ms. Sonia, Sanja R. Scott, a lifelong Effingham County resident and co-pastor and Assistant International Youth Director of Pentecostal Miracle Deliverance Ministry in Guyton. Sanja is the wife of Roger Scott, mother of three sons, Roger Junior, who has a welding certification from Savannah Tech; Darius, Cornell University graduate with a bachelor's in Mercer, masters, master science, and future neurologist; and Isaiah, also a Cornell University graduate with a bachelor's in environment and sustainability. She is also an entrepreneur, servant leader, and motivational life coach. Scott and her husband are the owners of Scott and Sons Trucking LLC, established over twenty years ago, and today is one of the leading certified disadvantaged business enterprises in the Savannah metropolitan area with a fleet of twenty-four commercial hauling trucks and ten tractor trailers. The Scots embody a deep passion for philanthropy and gives back to our community in several ways to include rallies and sponsorships. Among her many achievements and busy schedule, she also enjoys traveling, public speaking, and writing. She has published her first book on learning strategies for children, I Q. Learns to Fish. Help me welcome Pastor Sanja Scott.
Good evening, and thank you, and to God be the glory for all of that. I mean, it's because I'm so old that I've been able to accomplish most of that. Ms. Helmly, my former teacher, fifth grade, I would say, ninth grade, U.S. history. We're grateful for that. I'm just going to read into your hearing today a verse from the Book of Micah. Micah 6:8 reads, "He hath shown thee, O man, what is good, and what doth the Lord require of thee but to do justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with God?" Amen. Let us bow our heads for a quick word of prayer. Oh, Heavenly Father, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus. We come with praises and thanksgiving on our lips, thankful for this meeting today. Thank you for this county. Thank you for the young women and the men who made a vow to serve. We thank you for this audience, God. We thank you for all of the productivity that will occur here tonight, God, in the name of Jesus. We thank you right now, Lord, that you would grant this commission with wisdom and understanding, God, that you instill in them a spirit of justice and of righteousness, God, and most of all, that you will bless them with humility and servant's heart, remembering that true greatness comes through serving others. And God, as this county grows and morphs and ebbs and flows, unite us with vision and purpose. Help us not to stray from our Judeo-Christian roots. Help us to stay grounded in the original plan and purpose for this area, God. We thank you, Lord. It is a place for families. It is a place for growth, a place for entrepreneurship, a place that people can call home. We thank you most of all, Lord, that you would protect them from corruption and self-interest and keep them focused on the needs of the community, even at their own sacrifice sometimes. We pray for their families and that they will be strengthened, hallelujah, and that they would support their family members as they embark on this important business today. We thank you for peace in this meeting. We thank you for productivity. We thank you for safe travels on the way home. In Jesus' name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. Please rise for the pledge. Very good. Moving on to item number five, agenda approval. Consideration of a resolution to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed. Motion carries. Item number six, minutes. Consideration to approve the May 20th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Consideration to approve resolution number 025-16 to correct the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held February 18th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed. Motion carries. Public comments. Comments shall pertain to agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name into the microphone before commencing to speak. Correspondents, the agenda packet for this meeting is posted on the county's website. Any additional documentation presented at the meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, record, and distribution to the board. Moving to item number nine, our consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for a debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda. Item number one, consent. Consideration to approve and execute the fiscal year 26 intergovernmental capacity agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections for inmate housing at the Effingham County Prison. Item two, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm an emergency procurement contract with Train US Inc. for critical HVAC renovations at the Effingham Judicial Complex. Item three, consideration to approve to allocate opioid settlement funds in the amount of $4,500 to cover the cost of enrolling ten Effingham County Sheriff's Office deputies in operational readiness for police officers, opioid use disorder training program, postponed from May 20th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Moving to item 10, unfinished business. This contains items held from a previous agenda. Item number one, consideration to approve to amend and publish Section 2.02, equal opportunity and inclusion of the human resources standards practice, postponed from the May 6th and removed from the May 18th, 2025 meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Sarah Mouseoff, Director of Human Resources. Just kind of here to answer any questions you may have. I think we did a thorough staff report explaining what we were trying to do between the two policies, combining them, making it a little more concise and clear. So if you have any questions, me and Mr. Tim are here to answer them.
And it's the equal opportunity anti-discrimination that was one of the changes that we made. It's the name of the policy.
Yeah, it was updated in the...
I know, but it's the title wasn't changed because it's a carryover.
Oh, a carryover. Sorry, sorry. I was like, I did change it.
I just want to make sure that 2.26 is totally eliminated with this, and 2.02 replaces it completely?
Yes, ma'am. That's what we're trying to get approved tonight. Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Very good. Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we accept the Section 2.02 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed. Motion carries. Item number two, consideration to approve a development agreement between Greenland Developers and the Effingham Bounty County Board of Commissioners for a project known as Goshen Road Apartments, postponed from our May 6th, 2025 meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Chelsea Fernal, Planning Manager. So at the May 3rd, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting, a sketch plan for the Goshen Extension Apartments was approved. That development is approximately 400 units. The agreement is, the county finds that providing transportation services to the Goshen project is consistent with Effingham County Transportation Master Plan, and the agreement states that the county will provide water and services pursuant to the will-serv letter. The county is in the process of obtaining ownership of Goshen Commercial Park Drive, and staff does recommend approval of the agreement.
And I believe on the agreement itself, it states that, that we will not sign the agreement until Goshen Commercial?
Drive.
Drive is acquired.
Yes.
Okay. And just for public clarification, this project was approved when?
So the sketch plan for the project was approved May 3rd of 2022.
Okay, very good. And do we have a location? I know it's north of...
I can pull that up for you if you would like.
It's, if you know where the existing apartment complex is on Goshen Commercial?
Yeah.
Kind of, which is kind of north of where...
The Seasons of Japan area over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right north of Seasons of Japan, it surrounds that existing apartment complex.
All right, closest to the industrial park.
Yes, yes, sir.
I believe that rezon, if I'm not mistaken, goes back even further.
Oh, yeah, too. Yeah, that was just a sketch plan. The zoning of this...
I've had some people ask about it, but all that's done five years, six years.
I think it predates the six years I've been here.
Okay. Yeah, just wanted to be clear that we weren't approving anything while we're in a moratorium or anything.
Right.
Very good. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed. Motion carries. Item number three is a public hearing. Planning Board recommends approving an application by Manny Graham to rezon plus or minus 33.5 acres located on Old Augusta Road from AR1 to I1 to allow for industrial uses, map number 476, parcel number 4E in the 5th District. This was postponed from our May 6th, 2025 meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So this application was originally received on August 20th, 2024 at 12:37 PM. So that was before the commencement of the moratorium, so just so you're aware of that. Again, the applicant is requesting to rezon 33.5 acres to I1 for industrial uses. And if approved, the applicant must return before the Board of Commissioners for the site plan approval process. The rezoning is consistent with the future land use map as this parcel is projected to be industrial, as you can see there on your screen. And at the planning board meeting, there was a motion for approval with the following condition, that this development shall be limited to the light industrial uses of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. That is Section 5.12.1, and shall include warehousing as well. So staff has reviewed the application, and the application is complete with the conditions that are listed on your staff report, including the one that I just read.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone here speaking for this project? Please come up to the podium.
Yes, good evening. Chad Zitrock with Kern and Company, here representing Manny Graham, which owns the property and filed the rezoning application. As you're aware, this, this property and rezoning application has kind of been pending for a little while. It did go to the planning board back in May, and we received a recommendation for approval from that board. Then, when it was coming to the plan, to the Board of Commissioners in May, there were a few concerns that came up, and in response to those concerns, we chose to table the item for, you know, to commission meetings. Since that time, we've reviewed the staff recommendations, and two of the concerns that came up were the visibility from Old Augusta Road and access from Old Augusta Road. So what we've chosen to do to add to those conditions that are currently recommended by staff are to ensure gated access is no less than 300 feet from Old Augusta. So that would leave room for four trucks roughly to kind of stack before you get there so that there would be no stacking within the Old Augusta right of way, as well as provide a berm along Old Augusta and screening so that whatever occurs with this property will have an eight-foot berm with a six-foot tall opaque fence along the Old Augusta corridor for screening purposes. So in addition to the staff recommendations, we are also agreeing to put gated access, no less than 300 feet from Old Augusta, and to put an eight-foot tall berm with a opaque fence and landscaping for screening along that corridor. In addition to that, staff did mention that this is industrial on the master land use plan, comp plan. And part of the reason for filing this application, going a little further back, the county tax assessors office went ahead and valued this property in 2023 as industrial property. And the tax value on the property was 3.8 million on the 33 acres. Well, currently it's on AR1, so part of kind of starting the process with this own application was to kind of get it into compliance with the way the tax assessors, you know, is evaluating the property. So we think that's a, you know, valid aspect, kind of in conjunction with this application. Other than that, be glad to answer any questions you have regarding the application or information you received.
Yeah, they hit him and his neighbor's property.
Correct.
Didn't we overturn that, though, as a board?
It has been overturned. However, in the appeal process, it is my understanding that as of 2026, it will go back to the $3.8 million value, regardless of what the zoning is, unless it's put into a conservation easement.
So it hasn't happened yet, but it's happening in the future.
It is, it's basically...
It's postponed.
The void has been, or the, yes, it's been extended until 2026.
You effectively gave them a relief for one year. And so since they reassess every year, it can be, it can be just revalued again.
If there's any questions, this is your...
I did. I didn't know if we were having the public hearing first. You want to hold the public hearing, or you want to go ahead and...
Yeah, we were...
Or ask?
Yeah, we were doing the public hearing first, according to the agenda order here.
Okay. So you want to ask questions now, or we're going to hear both sides?
Yeah. Let's go. Did you have stuff specifically for Chad?
I will, but we can...
Is there anyone here opposed to this? If so, please come to the podium. BNIC, no. Phil, floor is yours.
My question is just clarification on intended use and what, you know, how the property is going to be developed.
So, um, the petition has been filed for industrial use. The property is under contract to be purchased by a end user. That will not be, you know, Mr. Graham's will not be developing the property. Per the rezoning application, it is some kind of motor vehicle, transload type use. There have been some discussions with staff early on about that complying with the I1 use as a automotive storage yard, and that's kind of the way the, the application was filed in conjunction with that as a permitted use in I1.
So will this strictly be a storage yard? Is crushing going on onsite as well, or just this is strictly storage?
This will be a transload storage yard in the event the particular purchaser that is looking at the property chooses to move forward. However, for the zoning application, but if there was crushing or something like that, it's my understanding it would move to an alternative zoning or an additional approval by the Board of Commissioners. And as was indicated by staff, there is a further site plan process that this would have to proceed to in the event the zoning is, is approved.
The cars, would they be new cars, old cars, wrecked cars?
It's my understanding there could be a mixture of...
But no wrecked cars?
Army?
But none of them will be wrecked in any way?
I wouldn't see none of them will be wrecked. I mean, they load them. There's new cars, there's used cars, and there's, I mean, there's...
But if they're wrecked, they come out of under our junkyard ordinance, which would be prohibited from doing.
Well, it, they would require...
Operable, I would say, not wrecked, inoperable.
Under current zoning, you'd have to get a conditional if they move wrecked cars.
That's right. You have to get a conditional zoning.
As we understand that, I mean, it's...
Okay.
It's my understanding the majority of this property is wetlands?
Yes, that is correct.
So out of the 35 acres, how many, how much of the property is buildable?
Roughly 10, once you take out the buffers. Probably not even 10, probably closer to eight and a half.
Okay. So, so, so that piece of land pretty much is worthless except for that 10 acres of land?
That is correct.
And you have no ideas, clearly, apparently, that there's, you're not sure exactly what's going to happen. If this purchaser does it, it's going to be this type of discussion we're talking about, about a loading yard or that type of thing, but you're not sure even that can happen. So we're not even sure about the consequences of environmental impact by whatever goes here, right?
There are stormwater regulations that we have to adhere to regardless of what the zoning is, whether it's AR, whether it's I1, you know, whatever it is. In addition to that, you know, this property has been burdened by a wastewater treatment plant to the north that is not county-owned. It's a privately maintained wastewater treatment plant. It's bordered by Old Augusta, and so there's not a lot of uses that, in my opinion, are kind of suitable for this particular property. It's been identified as industrial in the master land use plan. We think that there's a fit for a project to, to, to go there and kind of while we're proceeding in this manner. But we acknowledge there are still some steps to take place after the, in the event the industrial zoning is approved, but...
My concern is just, it is further down, and I know that it is approved for that as far as our zoning that, but it is further down. And I am concerned about how much wetlands we're destroying in that area because it is feeding. I mean, that's part of our natural flow to, to feed the Savannah River and so forth and that we count on, and apparently going to count on a whole lot in the future here because we're getting ready to build a whole, whole water treatment thing to, to move some water from it. So just a lot of concerns here and from people. I'm sure I've spoken to you, but they've definitely contacted me about the impact just further development and destruction will do there, so.
Yes, and we're not proposing any impacts to the... Yes, and we're not proposing any impacts to the wetlands as currently delineated.
But you can't deny that anytime that you develop land next to a wetlands, then it's not going to have impact on that land, right? I mean, I I I built a house. It impacted it. I mean, you can't deny that, that it's going to have an impact.
There's no impact to the regulations by the core, yes, as far as they're concerned, but it definitely affects the amount of water and water quality, things of that nature acknowledged.
Thank you.
Chad, in relation to the the wetlands in the neighborhood to the north of the property, what is the approximate buffer between that community and the usable land?
It would be a hundred and fifty feet, which is what that buffer is. And the one we've done in the past, which would probably come into the the site plan application, will be leaving like a fifty-foot disturb buffer and then do a berm for sound variances and such. So kind of partially burned for noise and partially natural for the the height and natural growth.
Gotcha. And the property behind it's pretty wet, too. I think it's just a little small piece.
Correct. You've got a strip that's industrial, but it is the majority of that's wetland. That's on the end of the property where the wetlands on the property is. And then you've got a little section that is the the treatment plant facility.
Gotcha.
Are there any variances associated with this request on buffers? So there's no buffer variance request associated?
Correct, because we've got industrial on the one side and we're complying to the residential. We're actually exceeding the Old Augusta requirement.
Well, the curve ball for me is on the tax assessor's side. And I know we've, I think we've done it two different times for the applicant. And tax assessor's office wasn't real happy with some of my comments, but I just felt like they were rezoning the property on their own. I don't feel they can do that, but apparently I don't make the law. So as you said, you've got eight, nine acres of usable land. And he's going to get taxed at the industrial rate. I'm not, I'm not really, and I've expressed this with applicant, I'm not excited about the end use, but as you stated previously, I mean, eight or nine acres, I mean, that is limited to what you can do.
Correct.
Far as industrial.
Let's see if the original to here to. Yeah, if he's going to be burdened with it.
So the proposed use is is allowable or not allowable? That's where I'm confused.
I believe that Tim, correct me here, if if it was to be used for non-running vehicles, for example, if that's a conditional use on L I?
It's that then it would fall under the conditional use on a junkyard, right? And that's, and so there's additional requirements with regards to wrecked wrecked vehicles for for export. And so with regards to stacking, loading and unloading, and so it requires, it would just require conditional use, but it is permitted industrial with a conditional use. So then at that point, probably when they do the site plan, they would have to come in for a conditional use on the property if it was going to be used for exporting wrecked vehicles.
Now, as it sits now, and Chelsea, this may be a question for you, just briefly run through light industrial uses.
Yes, sir. So your light industrial uses. I pulled it up.
I'm sorry, industrial uses, I one.
Yep. So this is under under the I one. So we're looking at assembly or fabrication of previously manufactured parts, boat sales and repairs, automotive sales and repairs, automotive storage excluding junkyards. Currently, right now, florist, retail and wholesale are in there, laboratories, and then a list of different types of manufacturing. Bakery products, appliances. So you're you're less intense manufacturing.
Gotcha. And then warehouses.
And then in addition, because this is, this is I one, they added the the warehouse because under the light industrial, the new zoning, that's under approval tonight, that that will be included in that. So they added the light industrial, the warehousing to that as well.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Which I would think the warehouse is probably not viable on eight acres with what they would need for, you know, trucks to maneuver.
I've seen it done on there.
Oh, yeah. Well, eighty, ten acres less the buffers.
It would be a There could be a building or a structure. I would not envision it operating as a typical warehouse as we envision it, but it could be some
Probably a dock and a small carriage. Do you mind if I speak?
Yeah, please.
All right, just speak where I'm at on this. First of all, we want to honor Phil's position on this. It's his district. I don't have a dog in the fight as far as that goes. I know we worked hard on the ordinance for the for the junk cars. So I just want to make make sure we're not approving a use that's going to negate what we worked so hard on to avoid. If he wanted that there and the buffers are there, I mean, from the site plan, I saw it look good. It went to great extent to to buffer. If that's his decision, I go along with it, but just want to make sure we don't do something to carry on to negate some of the other stuff that we've done. So we make sure we got the wrecked cars out of the places we don't want them. It may be okay. I I'm not going to make a judgment call on that, but that's just my thoughts. I don't want to mix up the the two because if they are wrecked, they can be running. I've seen them run on three wheels. And it's just a nightmare type of operation, you know, to be on Old Augusta or anywhere for that matter. And again, that's that's his district. District owners respect that. It's it's an industrial use piece of land in my in my opinion.
And, yeah, just for note, the, I know Cowan developed that small piece right next to S T's trucker, and I think it's on seven acres as it sits right now. So. Okay, very good. Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I, yeah, I'm on, speak to it if if I understand the the assessment, that's a major factor, I mean, like it or or not. And I think that's viable option now is do, the answer is no, I'm not there when it comes to a junkyard, junk cars. And if if staff, if everybody's comfortable that that's not going to be an allowed use, I I don't have a problem.
And then I'll clarify, not without a conditional use application, which is another step, right?
And I appreciate that, Mr. Kiefer, but I just, I hate
I'm trying to make it viable for this property.
And I, I mean, I hate that they're in the pushing area and then, but I just, I don't like it when we don't have anything definitive a little bit more. There's just so much in the air about this. And and there's a lot of other uses that you read off that would be, I wouldn't really have any complaint about here, really. When you mentioned a lot of those other things that's part of an industrial process, I just, I I just not, I'm just not sure if right here is where where we need something like that. I I'm just, and I respect your, and it is your district, but I just really that and and I I am concerned about development. Anytime there's stuff like this, but anyway, I understand where he's coming from as far as what the tax, you know, says, that's that's just tough.
And it goes beyond my district. This is a major thoroughfare in the county. I know a lot of the folks in your district drive that route. Those Jamie's.
Well, everybody.
So, you know, this is, this is not a a me decision. I'm just offering my my thoughts. And I'm trying to to make, I just. My concern is I I I know the 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 type facility that Roger's describing. I've seen it. I've dealt with it for years trying to solve a problem that exists and I don't want to create another one. That's that's all I do not want to do. So.
And I think the planning board, I listened to this. I watched it online. I think the planning board had these same questions. I think it was a a three, two vote on the planning board. I don't think it was an overwhelming win there either, but.
Tim, question or Chelsea? If approved for this use, would it require a D cell lane at all for this area?
Well, they would. Okay, so this this is the area that will remain two lanes. And so that case, they would probably have a traffic study on that to determine their volume. If it was south of logistics and at that point it becomes four lanes and they and they'd be restricted to right in, right out, but not this area. So this area, they would probably need a traffic study, but I would guess they'd be required to have a at least an XL lane coming out of it. That would be my assumption with the heavy trucks.
And Chad, maybe this is a question for you, just in alignment with the supply chain management across the street, would the drives kind of align a little bit? Are you looking?
We would attempt to make those, you know, aligned based upon the timing of the partway. Once it becomes a divided median, then it really doesn't make a lot of difference, but depending on the timing of when it moves forward. And I would anticipate, as with most applications with the site plan application, we would provide a trap traffic count based upon I T U trip generations. And then if they met those warrants, it could possibly proceed to us D cell lane, XL lane, you know, things of that nature based upon trip counts.
I was just looking at, you know, the count, it's not Cowan property anymore, but further down the road, it does have D cell on that small footprint of a warehouse building as well.
Got it.
You don't have that exhibit, do you?
I've got a copy, a printed out copy of it.
I just want everyone to know what, and again, this is not a sketch plan, right? This is just
Concept.
I've got a copy already.
And for clarification, that exhibit was not filed in conjunction with the application as discussed. That kind of came up as some concerns were brought up prior to the prior meeting to add the staging off of Old Augusta and to add the the buffer berm along the frontage.
Roger, need one?
I thought the buffers were really good on it and screening was good on it.
Yeah, no, the buffers look great on it.
Especially along the line where the neighborhood is, that's my biggest concern really, wasn't so much as
That was some things that brought to my attention by others and that's why I was asking what the buffers were. Area there.
If it's not wrecked cars, I don't even care about the screening on the front, to be honest with you.
Very good.
None of the warehouses have that.
Mr. Kiefer?
With that, I mean, I'm I'm comfortable making motion for approval with the understanding that obviously the uses that we've discussed are gonna would require a, or some of the other, I'm not saying it's proposed to be used, would require the conditional use. But I do see it as a fairly low impact. In this, what I'll call a pretty unique piece of property with where it's located, it's kind of in a, you know, tough area. So with that, I'll make that motion.
Okay, so clarify your motion, please.
Make a motion to approve with planning board and staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries? Oh, sorry.
One opposed, please.
One opposed.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if you can pause
Yes, ma'am.
Here, we need to go into the budget. The budget time is scheduled for five thirty.
Very good.
We wouldn't be able to have second reading anyway because we had, it's not unanimous.
Yeah, we'd have to wait to the next meeting to have second reading because of one objection.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. That's a new business number four for budget. New business number four? Okay. Moving on to new business, item number four, consideration to approve the first reading of budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. So I'll be moved to the six, seventeen of the next meeting. Having technical difficulties.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon. I'm Mark Barnes, the finance director. Tonight's the first reading of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six draft budget. And this is just a presentation and discussion, so this is not voting on the budget. This is just the very first
No, it is. It's the first reading.
First reading.
First reading. There's no adoption.
Not this.
So let's go right into it. So this is some of the financial context that we developed the budget around this year. The preliminary digest shows the growth continuing.
Lean into the mic just a little bit.
Yes, sir. So the growth is continuing in the digest like we saw in recent years. It's slowed down just a little bit. The digest is up fourteen percent this year. This time last year, the increase was sixteen percent. The sales tax revenues, which is also another major source of revenue for the general fund, is still growing, but at a slower pace than what we saw back during the COVID inflation years. And just like in the prior year, we have major state grants supporting multiple projects, including the new wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And this is a pretty significant factor for our plans in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. While inflation does seem to be slowing, it is still an ongoing concern. And with the number of capital projects we have going on, we pay especially close attention to what the material prices are doing in any given month. And speaking of capital projects, many projects that have been in the works during the current fiscal year will start to be built out in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. So the the significant fund balances that we've been building up over the last number of years are going towards these projects in fiscal year twenty-six. Going into the general fund, the general fund is the main source of day-to-day service delivery for the county. So the sheriff's office, EMS, courts, elections, and others are all funded by the general fund. This year, the draft budget has an overall increase of approximately nine million or eighteen percent. Much of this is driven by transfers of over eight million that are going out to S P L O S T and T S P L O S T funds to assist with the capital projects being carried out this year in those funds. Other major, other major contributors to the increase are a three percent coal and a two percent merit are proposed this year as well as some staffing changes that were made in the middle of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and a few that are going to be proposed in fiscal year twenty-six, and all of those changes are now reflected in the budget book leading up to the eighteen percent. The general fund is balanced this year by using approximately seven million in fund balance. We've been saving up fund balance for some years now in anticipation of these construction outlays. And fiscal year twenty-twenty-six is the year that we're going to see that bill come due. Even with this projected use of fund balance, our general fund will still have reserves that are well above our policy minimums. On this slide, we see the fiscal year twenty-twenty-fives, which is the current year, and we see the actual millage rates and the proposed rates for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. These are the rates for the unincorporated properties that the board sets. This budget is built around a three percent rollback of the county M and O rate. Uh, this budget is built around a three percent rollback of the county M and O rate, which is that rate there up top, and, uh, which represents a significant decrease in the overall rate down at the total section, going from nine point zero seven six to eight point nine zero eight. Uh, this five point four two eight rate is the main millage rate for general fund operations. And, and this, of course, is just a proposed rate that the budget was built around. The board will decide the actual rate at a future date. Uh, with the current preliminary countywide digest, by the way, one mil is about four point two million dollars. And, uh, looking at just that county M and O millage rate, which is the main millage rate for the county, this chart shows that year over year, uh, the decline in that main millage rate. Uh, despite inflation in recent years driving up costs, the county has been able to fund operations even while rolling back the millage rate, uh, thanks in part to the new construction that's been going on in the county. And, uh, on this page here, we just show a pie chart. And this is based off the tax bills that went out in the fall, um, of, of twenty twenty four. And we see these are the actual millage rates, and this is just a breakdown of the tax bill. Uh, we see in the upper right, the five point five nine six mills, that is the county portion, uh, the county M and O that funds the general fund. And the, uh, the big piece of the pie there is the, uh, the school board's, uh, M and O rate, which is set by the Board of Education. Uh, moving into the personnel changes in the general fund. So this is just a brief summary of the proposed changes, uh, for that. Uh, there's a three per, three percent COLA to be distributed across the board and a two percent merit to be allocated at the discretion of the department heads and elected officials, uh, with the same rules as when this has been done in the past. The general fund has a proposed FTE increase of eighteen point forty seven, that's full-time equivalents, uh, compared to the original fiscal year twenty twenty five adopted budget. A number of these positions were approved mid-year this year, uh, while some are existing positions being moved from the special funds into the general fund. And a few of these are actually brand-new requests for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Three point five of these positions are actually being moved from the senior activity fund into the general fund. And there's also one being moved from the sanitation fund into the general fund. So in those cases, there are a decrease in the special funds and an increase here in the general fund. Uh, these changes are being made to consolidate some of the budgetary departments and because of changing job duties requiring a change of funding source for those positions. Um, so in fiscal year twenty twenty five, we had four hundred and one point seventy five FTEs, and that's going to four twenty-two or four twenty point twenty-two in this proposed budget. Um, some of the changes that are, some of the brand-new, uh, positions that are being added, by the way, are like the school resource officers that were added. And we've had, uh, a couple of personnel added to facilities and fleet and a few other small ones. By the way, the overall personnel budget for the general fund is increasing by seven percent. Uh, that's the total cost of all personnel in the GF. And, uh, this covers the COLA, the merit, and any additional personnel, um, into fiscal year twenty twenty six. Um, so this slide here is showing the overall department changes, uh, in the proposed budget and a comparison to the fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. And, uh, so these are all of the constitutional officers, elected officials, and departments the general fund contains. And, uh, there's a lot happening in the general fund this year. Uh, you can see the overall increase, which we talked about earlier. And it's driven largely by, uh, transfers out to capital. Uh, those transfers can be seen down in department fifty-one called other agencies. And we see there's a pretty, a pretty sharp increase in that overall budget. Those are the funds that are going out towards, uh, the capital funds to fund roads and parks and other projects. Some other pretty noteworthy changes are there's the creation of three new departments in this fiscal year. The, uh, public engagement services, county engineering services, and customer support services. Uh, these departments are being staffed with existing personnel that had been in other positions that are being moved into these new, newly created departments. Additionally, in here, we have consolidated down some budget departments. For instance, down there, department sixty, fleet maintenance, uh, for a few years now, we've been, uh, recording all a vehicle maintenance expenses for the general fund in that one department. And we kind of felt it made more sense to put those expenses back into the individual department where they used to be. So for instance, EMS's expenses for vehicle maintenance will now be recorded in the EMS department, uh, rather than down there. And so there are, been a few changes like that that you'll see in here. Uh, another consolidation in prior years, the senior citizens, uh, meal delivery used to be divided into two departments, one for congregate, one for home delivered. And that's being consolidated, uh, into one. And department seventy, the board of equalization, which is managed by the clerk of courts, that is being rolled up into the clerk of courts budget department up top at zero zero five. So this was a kind of a busy year, this year, in reorganizing a few things in the general fund. Part of this is kind of cleaning it up and consolidating it because, uh, we are in the middle of, you know, an ongoing implementation of brand-new budget software. And cleaning up some of these things will make that go a little bit smoother. Going into the special funds, the special funds are, uh, includes fire and rescue, E nine one one, development services. But it's also where the vast majority of our capital projects are expended from. And so this is one that can swing a good bit from year to year, just based on what we're doing with capital. And, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty six, the budget's proposed at two hundred and ninety-eight million. And this includes all of the ongoing capital projects and new projects with roads, parks, the water system, and others. Um, about seventy-one million of this funding is set aside for road projects alone. Out of the two hundred and ninety-eight million, about a hundred and ninety-two million in the special funds is for capital projects. And, uh, the increase in fiscal year twenty twenty six's proposed budget compared to twenty twenty five is due largely to the additional, uh, the addition of capital projects, uh, that are going to start being built in fiscal year twenty six. There are some relatively small operating changes as well, and we'll cover a few of those, uh, in the next slide. And so the personnel, which is where the operation changes are happening. Uh, just like with the general fund, there's a proposed three percent COLA and two percent merit in these special funds. And, uh, the overall FTEs here increased only by point five, uh, but that's with fire gaining six FTEs and some other departments losing some FTEs that were moved into the general fund. The new fire personnel are requested to be hired to staff, uh, station that's transitioning from volunteer to full-time. Uh, the total FTEs in the special funds is proposed just to go from one fifty-three point twenty-four to one fifty-three point seventy-four. And the overall personnel budget for special funds is going to be increasing by four percent. And that overall four percent, you know, includes the COLA and the merit in these proposed personnel changes. And like with the general fund, this is a list of all the special fund departments. And, uh, these are all the details and a comparison to the prior year. And, uh, with capital projects being in here, there can be some pretty big swing in some of these. And, uh, we also see a number of departments that have their budgets going to zero. That's the SPOST twenty seventeen, roads and recreation, and other SPOST seventeen departments. Those SPOST funds are being spent down, so those departments are being wound down and are going to be deactivated, uh, in twenty twenty six. Uh, the biggest changes that we see here, though, is at the very top, we see the special tax district. And, uh, it's going to be having some large operating transfers like the general fund was having. These transfers are going into, um, SPOST, T SPOST, and stormwater funds to cover capital projects. And, uh, we also see a large change in department thirty up near the top for parks and landscapes. And that's because of large, uh, park capital projects that are going to be, uh, built out this year. And water and sewer has a pretty large increase due to a number of major capital projects there. And, uh, lastly, towards the bottom, we see a pretty big jump in stormwater, and that's the, uh, Westwood Heights drainage project. There's been a lot of talk about capital, so this is just a slide to kind of focus on that just a little bit more. Um, and here we have some information on, on, you know, just that. So a hundred and ninety-two million in proposed projects, and this includes many existing projects currently underway, water projects, T SPOST road projects, fire stations and things like that, but also, uh, projects that have not yet started but will in the coming year. And, uh, like I mentioned earlier, there's about seventy-one million dollars worth of road projects alone, with most of that coming from the, uh, the new T SPOST, uh, road list. Um, there are several major water infrastructure projects underway, uh, and those are listed out here with the two big ones, of course, being the wastewater treatment plant and the water plant. Significant funding has been dedicated to parks across the county, uh, totaling about seventeen million in fiscal year twenty twenty six. Uh, and for a detailed list of every capital project, uh, please look at page twelve in the budget. And that's going to list out every one of the capital projects we have in fiscal year twenty twenty six. Uh, the main story with the budget this year is regular operations are not changing all that much, but we are seeing some significant, uh, changes due to capital projects. Uh, just a little bit of additional information on the budget. Uh, agency budgets are included in here, and that includes entities like Public Defender's Office, the DA's office, Live Oak, and some others. The millage is set at a later date like we discussed earlier. So this draft uses a preliminary three percent rollback rate, but, uh, what that rate actually ends up being will be determined by the board, uh, in a future meeting. And, uh, in a similar vein, the schedule of fees is going to be brought before the board in a future meeting. So the budget right now is built with, uh, existing fees in mind. And, uh, currently, the plan is to adopt this meeting, uh, adopt the budget at the second meeting and June seventeenth.
Well, I really, I really like the slide on the millage rate. It shows historically with that going down. I think that's very helpful. And three hundred million home capital expenditures, um, that's definitely a lot going on. And to everyone out there and everyone listening, thank you all for supporting T SPOST and SPOST. That's a very important part to our budget. That helps us with roads, parks, buildings, and that's, gives us a lot of options to where we can do things for the county. So thank you all for supporting that and hope you all continue to support it.
And if, if I can add some, a little bit of color on the budget, um, while it does show what, what would appear on paper as a very large, uh, growth in the, uh, general fund budget from, uh, roughly fifty-two to sixty-one million, uh, please keep in mind, um, that, uh, seven point one million of that nine million, uh, is a, uh, is a transfer out of use of the fund balance that we've been saving up, uh, for, uh, about four years, uh, to tackle these capital projects. Uh, and so, uh, when you, uh, when you back that out, it's about a two million, uh, a two million dollar, uh, growth year over year, less the, less the transfer of the fund balance. And so, uh, it's, uh, it's, it's somewhat reasonable. Plus, we're, we're able to roll back, uh, the millage. And it's a point I wanted to bring back too, that the three percent is a key number to roll back millage in Effingham County because that is the maximum amount under the, uh, Carter Burns floating exemption, uh, that the value of your home, uh, that the taxable value of your home can increase. Uh, so if you roll back three percent and your home set can only increase by three percent, uh, that means your worst-case scenario, uh, is that your county M and O, what you pay in your county M and O stays the same year over year.
A dollar amount.
A dollar amount. Uh, and so, um, uh, in past years, we've been more aggressive than that. Uh, and if you, uh, look at this bar chart here, you'll see, um, uh, that that decrease from seven point five two eight five years ago to fi- uh, five point four two eight, I know that's projected, um, is a twenty-eight percent, um, uh, decrease over that period of time, uh, in the millage rate. Your home, um, uh, if you, if we were to just to roll it back by the maximum amount that your home could, uh, increase in taxable value, that would have been, uh, all we would have had to have done is, uh, decrease it by fourteen percent. So we've really doubled over that period of time. Uh, and it's, and I, and I was at, uh, Commissioner Hemley's, uh, town hall. Uh, and, um, you know, it was tough for some folks to believe, but I said, just, you know, just go home and look at your, uh, county M and O mi- uh, taxes, what you're actually charged five years ago. Uh, and you'll see that it's, uh, it's, it's materially less, uh, than what you're being charged today. Not saying that for the things we can't control, like the, um, uh, like the school district and the IDA, but certainly on this, uh, what you can control here on this DA's, uh, which is the, uh, which is the county M and O. It has decreased substantially. Um, I, there's one, uh, a few things that I wanted to point out too, um, in some large increases. One of them being the county DA's office. Uh, they did approach us with a very large request. Um, we tried to accommodate it as best we can. Uh, the thought was to fa- he, they, they were requesting about a fifty percent increase, uh, year over year. We've tried to, I think we came to about twenty-six percent, um, increase year over year is what the, um, what we're recommending here. Uh, so we're looking to phase that in. Uh, and, um, we will discuss that, uh, also with our, um, Ogiechi circuit partners in, uh, Bullock, Jenkins, and Scriven as well. Uh, and with that, I will say, uh, we did mention, uh, fire did have a large increase of staffing, probably the largest that we've had in the county this year. It is six new positions. It's not just adding, um, firefighters, uh, for potential expansion, uh, of a, uh, from a volunteer to a full-time, uh, fire station out in Marlow. Uh, but it also involves restructuring, uh, that department and the, um, uh, and the rank and tier system uh, that they have there, uh, so that they, uh, so that they can continue to grow. Uh, and with that, I mean, that's all the color that I'll provide, but I'm marking higher here for answer any questions.
I had a question on general fund details. Item number twenty-six, uh, Georgia DFAX has had a two hundred and fifty-four point seven percent increase. Could you elaborate on that one and other agencies as well, which is, uh, zero five one?
Yes, yes, sir. So zero five one, other agencies, that's where we house payments that we make, like, uh, to, uh, the cities or Live Oak. But it's also where we keep transfer expenses that are money coming out of the general fund and going to the other funds. And so the biggest increase there is, um, there's a transfer to SPOST and T SPOST, I think, both. And that's going to show on those other funds as a revenue, that's in their revenues. And so it's a contribution to those capital projects.
Gotcha.
And that's the, uh, biggest change there by far. On the, uh, you s- on DFAX. I'm gonna, I'm gonna investigate that one and see, and I'll get back with you on that.
I mean, I would, I would assume, um, being it was at seventy-five, seventy-five two, maybe they're adding some staff there. And not that I disagree with that by any means.
Well, while he's looking that up, I just want to sort of, um, go with what Jamie said, that without, um, without our T SPOST, you wouldn't see a lot of this stuff happening. And a- any of the SPOST taxes, in fact, because it's, that, that money would have to come somewhere that you're seeing when you see those ballparks redone and roads redone and all those types of things and that you're seeing a lot of and we'll see more of. I know nobody says you should never vote yourself for a tax, which is essentially what you're doing when you go and vote for that tax. But that money's going to come from somewhere. And, you know, we all like to have nice ballparks and we like to have nice roads and everything else that goes with it, and that costs money. So if it doesn't come from that tax, it's going to come from somewhere else. And everybody screams about property taxes all the time now already. So if we didn't have that money, it would, it would have to come out of some other tax.
And it spreads the burden across.
And it spreads the burden a little bit more. So, um, in any case, just want to jump on that bandwagon, Jamie, to say that it is definitely something we appreciate.
It does, and I'll also add that we're not the only ones paying that sales tax. Anybody who travels through Effingham pays that as well. So if they travel those roads, they buy something here, they're contributing to our roads, which is one of the few taxes, if any. All those types of sales taxes actually help us out. So if somebody's traveling through, they're paying too, so that, that helps us in a big way.
Yeah, and I'll say, I, I want to add too, and I say it every year, I don't, I don't like hoarding money, creating a fund balance, because it's taxpayers' money, either give it back or use it to their benefit, which is what we're doing now. So it's kind of come full circle over the last four years.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on twenty, the department twenty-six DFAX, that is an error in the presentation.
Okay.
If you look on page forty-two in the budget, it's going from seventy-five thousand to seventy-six and a half.
Okay, very good. So maybe two point five four seven percent increase? Very good, thank you. Uh, being this is a public hearing, is, uh, anyone from the audience have any questions? Being there are none, I will close the public hearing.
Staff recommends alternative number one to approve the first reading of the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget.
Make a motion to approve alternative one and approve the first reading.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. It is six oh five. At six oh five, we'll move into our planning. Six oh five, we'll move into our planning portion. We're all over the place tonight. Item number one is a public hearing. The planning board recommends approval of a request by James and Myrtle Hall to rezonate plus or minus five acres located at two seventy Cypress Point Road from AR one to AR two to allow for permitted uses in AR two. Map number three six seven, parcel number seven in the third district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant is requesting to rezone that five acres to AR two. The applicant would like to give one acre to their grandson and one acre to their granddaughter. Since the applicant would like to subdivide the lot, the rezoning will need to change to AR two as conforming AR one lots do require five acres. Cypress Point Road is a county maintained road. And the future land use map does project this parcel as agricultural residential. At the planning board meeting on May thirteenth, the, there was a motion for approval with the condition that no further subdivision than three lots was allowed. So staff has reviewed the application and it is complete with the conditions that there shall be no further subdivision, subdivisions than the three lots and that development services shall review and sign the plat. And then the plat shall be recorded for the zoning to take place.
Thank you. If the applicant is here and has anything they wanted to add, please come to the podium. Good to go. Thank you, ma'am. If there's anyone here opposed to this, please come forward. Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Being a staying in agricultural residential and going to family members. And this road is on one of the recent lists we approved to have resurfaced. I'll make a motion to approve with staff, planning board recommendations.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number two, second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of a request by James and Myrtle Hall to rezonate plus or minus five acres located at two seventy Cypress Point Road from AR one to AR two to allow for permitted uses in AR two. Map number three six seven, parcel number seven in the third district. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number three is a public hearing. The planning board recommends denial of a request by Tim O'Neill to rezonate plus or minus two out of twelve point eight five acres located on Green Morgan School Road from AR one to AR two to allow for permitted uses in AR two. Map number three six three, parcel number fourteen in the third district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So that applicant is again requesting to rezone two out of the twelve point eight five acres to AR two. Again, since the two acres is below the minimum needed for AR one, the acreage must be rezoned to AR two. Green Morgan School Road is a county maintained road. And the future land use map does project this parcel as agricultural. At the planning board meeting on May thirteenth of twenty-twenty-five, there was a motion for denial that was based on the fact that the applicant can place a second home on the property without having to subdivide the land. So staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete with the following condition that should this be approved, development services shall review and sign the plat. And then the plat shall be recorded for the zoning to take effect.
Thank you. If the applicant is here, please come forward. Please state your name.
Peggy O'Neill.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity, but we're going to withdraw the application. We are going to be able to do what we need to do without rezoning. So I'm sorry if I've taken up some of your time, but I appreciate the education.
Yes, ma'am.
Nice way to put it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty. Moving on to item number five, it's a public hearing. The planning board recommends approval of a request by Chris Ross to rezonate plus or minus one point one three acres located at four four two six Midland Road from AR one to AR two to allow for permitted uses in AR two. Map number four one eight, parcel number thirty-five in the second district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting to rezone that one point one three acres to AR two. The parcel is a non-conforming AR one parcel. And the applicant and their neighbor are actually doing a land swap here. You do have that plat, I believe, in your packet. Since the property lines are adjusting, the lot does need to come into conformity, which would be AR two zoning. Midland Road is a county maintained road. And the future land use map does project this parcel as agricultural residential. So staff has reviewed the application and it is complete again with the condition that development services shall review and sign the plat. And then the plat shall be recorded for the zoning to take effect.
Chelsea, just for clarification, could you name the numbers of the properties that are being swapped?
Yes, sir. So it is parcel number four one eight three five. So this parcel here and then the parcel here. And let me, here's your, your zoning map. So you can see that this parcel in the darker green is AR one. This parcel's AR two. So along with being non-conforming, they would have to be able to move the lines, they would have to be the same zoning as well.
I believe the three nine seven is owned by the same person. Correct?
So the, the applicant owns the four one eight dash three five. And then this is their, this would be their neighbor.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
And their goal is probably to relatively keep both parcels about the same acreage.
Yes, sir. So the acreage is staying the same, they're just kind of evening out the lines there.
Very good.
That's a good reason for rezone.
Is Mr. Ross here tonight? Please come up, state your name for the record.
Hello, Chris Ross, live at forty-four twenty-six Midland Road. Think we covered most of the details, but yeah, any other questions, please let me know.
Not going to put a warehouse here or anything like that.
Absolutely not.
Junkyard?
Yeah, as stated, you know, planning to, you know, exchange even quantities on both sides of the line, just kind of redraw it a little bit and help us fill out.
Very good. Anything else, guys? Perfect.
Pretty straightforward, I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold up, hold up.
I'm sorry.
Got to see if anybody's opposed. Is there anyone here opposed to this? If so, please come forward. Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion and we approve.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number six, second reading, consideration to approve the second reading of a request by Chris Ross to rezonate plus or minus one point one three acres located at forty-four twenty-six Midland Road from AR one to AR two to allow for permitted uses in AR two. Map number four one eight, parcel number thirty-five in the second district. I entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number seven is a public hearing. The planning board recommends approval of a request by Anna Helmey, Helmey to rezonate plus or minus point five acres located at six one five Nish Road from AR one to AR two to allow for permitted uses in AR two. Map number three seven five, parcel number thirty-five in the second district.
Yes, sir. So again, the applicant is requesting to rezone the point five zero acres to AR two. Again, as said in previous items, the threshold for conforming AR one zoning is five acres. Since this is below that, it will need to change to AR two. Per the AR two zoning district, if the parcel is connected to public water, then the minimum lot area can be half of an acre. I know that the applicant has been working to get on the county water. Nish Road is a county maintained road. And the future land use map does project this parcel as agricultural residential. Staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete again with that condition that development services shall review and sign the plat. And then the plat recorded for the zoning to take effect.
Very good, thank you. Is Ms. Helmey here tonight and have anything to add? Okay, very good. Is there anyone here opposed to this? If so, please come forward. Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we approve of the staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of a request by Anna Helmey to rezonate plus or minus point five acres located at six one five Nish Road from AR one to AR two to allow for permitted uses in AR two. Map number three seven five, parcel number thirty-five in the second district. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Alright. You don't want to power on, you want to take a break? Good? Okay, I'm good?
I'm good.
Alright, perfect. Alright, moving back to unfinished business, item number five. Consideration to approve the second reading to amend section five dot one agriculture districts, five dot nine neighborhood commercial district, five dot one zero general commercial district, five dot one one highway commercial district, five dot one two industrial districts and four dot one A table of permitted uses for the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. First reading approved, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is second reading, but there are, there was some confusion with regards, in the public with regards to what we were doing with the AR districts that I'd like to just clarify if I may. And so let me start by saying what the current AR districts are. They're the agricultural districts of the county. They can be located in the north or the, anywhere in the county right now. And so right now you have AR one. And that has your minimum parcel size of five acres.
Chelsea, can we put this on the screen, please?
Yes, absolutely.
And then you have AR two, which has a minimum parcel size of one acre. What we've been seeing recently, which brought forth the need to change this, is traditionally what we've been seeing, AR one rezonings to AR two were for, and tonight is a perfect example of that, is, is a large parcel. Wanted to, wanted to break out a small parcel for a family member. That's one reason, one of the main reasons in the past that we've seen AR one to AR two rezonings. The second is that AR one was the base zoning for the county when we, when we applied zoning back, I believe in the nineties. And there were lots that were zoned AR one that were from day one non-conforming, or they were less than five acres. So if somebody like this, Mr. Ross, tonight wanted to change a, change a property line or do some sort of change on it, they'd, they'd have to bring that into conforming and then they'd have to rezone it to AR two. That's traditionally what we've been, AR one to AR two rezonings have been used for. More recently, we've seen with the, with the growth that we've seen requests from people who want to rezone a larger AR one piece of property to subdivide it for sale into one acre lots. The, after discussion with the board and discussion with the steering committee, we realized that that's really not the intent of, of that particular zoning. So we are recommended two changes. One of them is that you lock down AR two zoning that it either has to be for a family member and you have to sign an affidavit to that fact when you, when you rezone the property. Or you're doing it in order to, because you're non-conforming and your property is under two and a half acres but more than one acre, so you rezone it to AR two just so you become conforming so you can do that line change like that gentleman did this evening. So, so how do we address folks that want to subdivide their property? We simply came up with a, a separate zoning, which was called AR three. And so AR three replaces AR one and your minimum lot size on that, rather than one acre, is now two and a half acres. And so that was the.
Well, AR, AR three would not replace AR one, correct?
AR three replaces AR two. AR one remains existing.
Yeah, okay.
Out there. And so what AR, what AR three really replaces is AR two because we are really locking down AR two with the exception of two particular applicant types, which are family members and to come in conformance if your AR one is currently not conforming. And so if you don't meet either of those requirements, you cannot go into AR two. And then if you wanted to peel off a piece of property in your AR one parcel, it would have to be a minimum now under AR three of two and a half acres. So that really was what we were trying to accomplish.
But you still have to get a rezoning.
You still have to get a rezoning. Unless it's, unless you're, unless you are subdividing an acreage more than five acres, right?
That's right.
But if you want to rezone and do something less than five acres, you can do something with a minimum size of two and a half acres now under AR three. So that really was the purpose, is to kind of protect that, that, protect the AR two zoning for the people that had traditionally used it, which was family and to become a conformance. And to, if you're going to sub, if you're going to subdivide your property, it's going to have to be a bigger lot. Basically.
To summarize, if you had a traditional five acre lot.
Yes, sir.
And you wanted to do AR two, you would have to do an affidavit and you could do up to five one acre lots on that per, with an affidavit.
You could, but that, I believe that becomes a major subdivision or? No, not, not for five?
Not for five.
Because it would be individual.
Yeah, so then, so you could do that if you had, if you had that affidavit, correct?
And again, going back to a traditional AR one, which is the five acre minimum. You, for AR three, you would not have to do the affidavit, but it would have to be two and a half acres.
Two and a half acres would be your minimum.
Got it.
Right, so you'd have to go, in that case, it would have to be two and a half and two and a half. Or you couldn't do it.
Yeah, if it was traditionally five acre AR one.
What you, you know, I had a, just planned to have a, if you had five acres and they wanted to sign the affidavit and it basically subdivide an acre for a family member. You could, you could, could you, not forcibly, but require the rezoning of the four acres to AR three, which then precludes it from being subdivided any?
Yes. Because the AR three wouldn't be, the only time you're going to have, and the same thing with the conformance issue, right? So if you've got a non-conforming AR one piece of property, that's three acres and then you want to bring it, you want to do something like change a, a line like this gentleman did tonight, but you're not changing the lot size. In that case, we're not allowing AR two because you meet AR three standards. And so in that case, you would have to, your, your next conforming zoning classification would be AR three. And it's the same case in your situation where you could then have an AR, you wouldn't necessarily have two AR twos, you'd have an AR two because that's less, for the parcel, that's less than two, one acre? Or one acre, I'm sorry. That's less than two and a half acres?
Yeah.
But for the remainder, if it does not meet that five acre standard, then it would have to, it would have to be rezoned to AR three.
And that, that would prevent that four acre from being further subdivided without.
Correct. Of course, the applicant can attempt to.
Have another kid.
The applicant can attempt to part, you know, petition to do it AR two. But I would think that the board, since it meets the requirements of AR three, would, and we would, when staff would do that, would discuss it with them, we would tell them that, you know, the two remain as AR three. we would tell them that, you know, the two remain as AR three.
Just for further protection, I'm not sure legally. Are you allowed to set a timeline before it could come back to you again for potential petitioning?
We do have one, isn't, isn't it a year? So people don't, we, we had that situation where we used to have more restrictive major and minor subdivisions of one year? Okay, so, we used to have a one year, but it's not there anymore, so, but...
Is that something, I mean, just tossing it out there, is it something we want to consider for an extra layer or no?
Well, my concern is, my concern is with the AR two. Okay, so I come up here and I tell you I want five lot, five acre, I mean, one acre lots for that five acres because I'm going to give it to my children. And you sign the affidavit, okay? But then after a year or so, I mean, can we really hold them to that? Can't they just sell it anyway?
Well, that's why I was asking.
That's, that's my...
That's true, they can.
They can.
Yeah.
So, so you know, I just, I don't see how...
That's why I was asking about timelines for AR two.
How do you keep from, how do you stop them from, 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 how do you make them use AR three? I don't think you can. I mean, if I'm going to go up there, I'll just go up there and divide it as much as I want to, saying that I'm going to do whatever I will do with it. And then, whenever I feel like it, I'll sell it for however much a, I can sell it for an acre a piece, you know? I, I don't see how this is, I, I think we need to, if we're going to do something, I think we need to make it, make it stronger. We either do away with AR two, or, or we limit the area. I don't know if we can do that, as to where it can be used.
Or to put a timeline on it, that it can not come back for petition?
Well, I mean, but how long? I mean, because essentially, I don't know that you can even do that. I'm far sitting here to say you should do what you want to your own land, but I don't know that, that you should have...
Well, I can say on, on your particular recommendation, they're not coming back to us to petition. What they're coming back is they've petitioned us once and they've divided into five. And upon, you know, the, the replating of that, they can, your concern is they can just go out and sell it.
Yes.
Because their family member wouldn't require any additional approval by the county or for them to come back to us at any point because it's, because it's been rezoned. So I, I don't know if the timeline would help?
Timeline, as far as, you know, you're, you're signing an affidavit, that affidavit having teeth for a certain amount of timeline that you are going to retain it as family use until that timeline expires.
Okay.
So I believe it would de-incentivize the things that we're looking at right now or discussing right now and make them true to it because a lot of people don't want to hold it, just say, though in three years, for example, out there. It takes a year to get plans and everything building, if, if you're going to build something. So, you know, maybe putting some kind of restriction on that may circumvent.
Like what kind of timeframe you thinking?
Two, three years?
And I would have to add, I mean, see if I can get the county attorney to chime in on that. Could...
Because affidavits, you know, legal document, I'm swearing to do what I'm supposed to do.
Right.
We should be able to put some teeth to it out of mind.
I would think the timeline would definitely deter people from trying to use that as a loophole.
Right. And so if we can legally do that, as maybe as part of the affidavit, but, but I don't know, I mean...
What about an instance where they build the house and they get sick, very sick, and they can't afford the house? They've got to sell the house, you know what I mean? You're just, you're going to have those situations.
Yeah, I think those are going to be fewer and far between the potential to, you know, those things that we could hear individually as they come up.
So with AR three, I've had a lot of conversations in the last two weeks. And as Tim said earlier, AR three is not going to replace AR one. I got phone calls on that, people were concerned about that. So, AR one with five plus acre lots, that is still in effect. So, we've been talking about this for a while in, at retreats and workshops. So the intent for AR three, I had a situation on Chester Thomas Road. A builder, I think it was a twelve, thirteen acre tract. It was right next to AR two lots on Highway twenty-one. And they wanted to rezone it AR two, they wanted to do the smaller lots. Well, whenever we deny something, we've got to have a legal reason. It can't just be, I don't like it, or because my friends said they didn't want it next door to them. I mean, we've got to have a legit reason that we're going to deny something. And I had to support that rezoning because they met all the requirements. I had no legal leg to stand on. So, the intent of AR three is to try and eliminate those situations to at least have a two and a half acre minimum lot size. And if I wanted to give one of my kids an acre of land one day, I'd like to do so as well, as I'm sure a lot of you would like to do so also. So we wanted to try to keep something in place that would still allow that. So, as of right now, we have AR two. I don't know if all of this is, you know, is the answer. I do agree with Commissioner Helmy's concerns. You know, there may, could be a loophole unless we make changes to what we're currently talking about. Maybe farther in, in the north end of the county, we designate some areas that it is only five plus acre lots. But what we run into is there's already AR two lots scattered throughout the north end. So that, that throws a curveball in, in some of the requests. So it, it's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, but I just wanted to say, we've had a lot of discussion on it. I know the steering committee's had a lot of discussion on it, appreciate their time. And just kind of want to give you all a background is there were certain situations that were coming up and we're trying to create something that would have larger lots, so.
Lee, is there anything you can add to it as far as the, the timelines? Potential for the affidavit?
I guess just off the top of my head, you could consider creating a conditional zoning with, within this classification to deal with that exclusion or exemption you're creating for family members. And that way, each one will get scrutinized and you can place your time limits on it as far as construction. If it doesn't happen or permits not pulled within a certain amount of time, then it's got to come back to the board to keep it in place or provide a reasonable explanation for why it has not progressed. Because I would think part of the process is going to be that certification by the landowner that this is going to happen, this is going to go forward. And if nothing happens in three months, then, then what's going on? So that's, that's, again, just off the top of my head, that may be one way to deal with it, like we deal with conditional zoning for junkyards, since we talked about that tonight. That's just, that's all I got tonight. Probably needed to talk about it some more to try to figure it out if that's the route we're going to go.
So my question is, and Commissioner Helmy mentioned this earlier before the meeting, is, you know, possibly doing a table to talk about this a little bit more? But is there a way to, can we table just the ARs and still move forward with business and, I mean, commercial and industrial?
And I actually have a, a thought on that, I'll share. It is, what you can do is amend it to remove the allowance for, for family members, the wording that allows family members and it can only then be used for, to, to meet conformance requirements like they did tonight. And then we can then, so that means basically unless you're less than five acres AR one, non-conforming anyway, you wouldn't be able to rezone it to AR two. And then if you're a, if you want to do these family things, we've then removed that and their only option is AR three, and we still leave those options out there. Because we do get a lot of these requests, and if you recall, we have not, we have not put a moratorium on ARs, right? So, if you remove it, then it leaves that door open for it. And if you go with the change, with the exception of the family language, it, it basically establishes it without the area that you're all concerned about, which is someone rezoning it to peel off a property for a family member, signing the affidavit and then, you know, and then, you know, immediately selling the property. We can come up with a solution for that down the road. That's one option. Two, you know, if not, people can keep rezoning to AR two for one acres without restriction. Because there is no moratorium on AR two property.
What, what's the timeline? I know this is a traveling time of year and I know we're looking at...
Well, we're looking at, what's August? Is it on, what?
Moratorium's up in August.
Yeah, moratorium's up in August. So we're looking at wrapping up the Rs. And this, and in the meantime, we can probably come up with a solution to this, you know, whether or not we even want to address the family issue in AR two or do some sort of conditional wording in the zone. We can, we can do that, then amend AR two later on. But we, this would allow us to kind of, this would allow us to open up AR three, kind of lock down AR two or the one acre lots, at least temporarily until you all kind of figure out which direction you want to go. And then...
And that's just by removing the family affidavit portion of it?
That's right. Just removing the family, the allowance to allow family, to subdivide for family with an affidavit.
Is it, would it be reasonable? I know we haven't moved to that portion yet, but I understand we're considering moving our first meeting of July. Is it feasible to say that I could be ready by the second meeting of July?
Oh, yeah, I would, I would think so. I mean, we just got to, we just got to come up with a solution for it. And we'll get with all of you, maybe in a workshop, which I think is at the next meeting?
Yes.
At the next meeting with proposals. And if you agree with them, we'll present them to you in July.
Okay. Or do we put them on the next meeting?
Well, I, I just, I don't think we're ready to do any of these yet, okay? And, and I think there's several reasons for it. One of them is, is, you know, we have, I, I don't think we did a good enough job in making the public aware of these. I understand that they're on the, the county website, but I, I have talked to several people who said, well, can I talk at this meeting? And I said, only if the chairman decides you can. I mean, you had an opportunity at the first meeting. Well, I didn't know that. And, and to tell you the truth, I'm still learning this too. But, but I just feel like the public hasn't had an opportunity to really look at these. We're, we're trying to do more with, with openness in what we're trying to do, people, and put it on our websites and Facebook pages, but this wasn't put on there. I mean, it was put on the meeting and agenda. But I didn't see it, it was put on the, it was put on the Facebook page?
Yeah, on the Facebook page, there was a, there was a link on the Facebook page and on the, and our website homepage, there was a link that, that showed the, the, takes you to a page that has the draft of, of the language.
Okay, and it was, I guess, I guess when I was asking, having not seen that, I didn't, how, how, how big was it to notice other than this is what we're going to consider? But anyway, I just, in talking to people, they said they just weren't aware this was going on. So, I, I'll just leave it at that is, maybe it's my fault, their fault, whatever the case may be. I don't feel I had enough time. When we first discussed this, because it's been, like you say, just in progress for a long time. I wasn't even on the board, but y'all kindly invited me to come and listen to things. But the idea was that the steering committee would meet and do their job and, and, and kudos to them because it was a long drawn out process. And I sat in fifteen to twenty minutes of a couple of meetings and was glad I could walk out the door, to be honest, because it's a lot to discuss and, and I give them credit. But I don't feel that I, as a commissioner then, after they presented what they presented, had a lot of opportunity for me to question some of the things that, that were or were not there. We've done a lot of discussion about this AR two and AR three as an example. But, but I, I don't, I really didn't understand, you know, that, that we didn't look, and, and I've sent you the stuff from Effingham Green people that are concerned that we're not looking at some of those things when we do develop our ordinances, and y'all got that today. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for sending that out. But I do think we, we're not looking at the environment enough in Effingham and those things are really not addressed on any of these. I don't feel like that they're, that we're descriptive enough in our buffers. You know, do we specifically say understudruffers a lot of times? I don't see some of that in some places, not all, but in some places. And, I mean, so, what are the design standards? It says, "Design standards." Well, where do you find the design standards? And, and maybe you can answer that?
I, I can answer that. There, there are none for AR one and AR two, for AR.
Yeah, let, let's go to the Bs and the whatever. Where are the design standards?
The only design standards we have for the Bs are in the commercial corridor districts, which includes, which y'all have, have approved already. And so, but, but other than that, you know, they're, 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 they're building standards because when you're outside of the commercial corridor district, you're really more in a, kind of a rural B one type environment.
But, but that's, don't you think we should have that? I mean, if we're sitting here concerned about how we're developing and, and what's going to happen? Because when people talk to me, they say, well, you've ruined the south end of the county. What are you going to do to the north end of the county? You know? And I just feel like that some of these, as I look through them and study them, I don't know that we're being specific enough with some requirements. Because if we aren't, they're going to use it as a loophole. Well, you didn't tell me I had to do it, so I don't. If, if you're talking about landscaping, you know, we had an issue, and that's another thing I say, there's no consequences for, for when one of the developers doesn't follow the, the site plan or the whatever. Or then we come up with one, we had an issue. Okay, well, I'm going to replace, I'm going to replace the trees I took down. You can't replace them. But I mean, do we have specific requirements of, if you destroy a natural buffer that you were supposed to leave alone, can you just throw in there some cheap landscaping, okay? And that's good enough? Well, I don't feel it is good enough. I think there needs to be a consequence and a serious consequence of, we need to, of say, if you're going to destroy, if you go in deliberately destroy a natural buffer, then I want to see X sized tree go back in place. And I want to, and your, and your environmental people say they want to see natural trees. They don't want to see these crape myrtles stuck in there. You know, they want to see some, some natural kind of stuff. And yes, it's going to cost them the money, but it should because they should have just left it alone. I just think there's all those things to me, we haven't put in here. And if we don't put them in there, then we're going to wind up with exactly what we've had already and we really hadn't made that many changes. I, I just, I just feel like we need a really legitimate workshop, not a hour before a commission meeting. We need to have the public have an opportunity to be part of that workshop or have a say. And, and I, I just feel like we're just not ready to do this yet. We do have till August. We've already said that. I know the developer people hate what I'm saying, you know? But if we're going to do this thing, this is our law that's going to guide us for however many years. And if we sit here and go, you know, I've still got two months to look at it? Let's take these two months and make sure we've written the right thing in that's going to, yes, allow development. I know it's coming. But let's do it a better job than I think was done in some parts of this county. And let's keep this county welcome to the people who said that's the reason they came here. Because what I'm hearing is, well, I'm getting ready to leave here because why I came here is gone. And I don't like to hear that. I want my children to hear, my grandchildren to hear, you know? I, I want to say, well, we did our, we may have made some mistakes that we need to look at and say, we need to do something differently, let's learn from our mistakes, all of us make them. But I don't know that we have in place with the ordinances that's being asked to be approved tonight, everything in place we need to see that we're not going to make some of those same mistakes.
Amen.
Are you looking at, I think, we're like three separate things here?
Yeah. So... I'm, I'm looking at tabling the second reading completely. And that means that eliminates that new thing to approve them until we can, we can regroup and look at this and have some serious discussions about, even back to the AR two and three. But also, what are we doing with the Bs and the Is as well, that we maybe hadn't looked at?
I agree, and I sent you a copy of a tree ordinance that I was considering that we need to get it put in place, I believe. And I agree with you on the consequences for disturbing our buffers. And I agree with you on the consequences for disturbing our buffers. It, it needs to be.
Punitive.
Put it, yeah, very punitive and, and it needs to be redone and formalized. I'll put it that way.
I'll agree with that too. It does get my blood pressure up that we're saying we ruined south end of the county. I appreciate that comment, being honest.
But people are saying it to me.
Well, I know they're saying that, but.
They're just saying it to be honest.
We're doing the best we can with the density that we have and a lot of things that we've done has brought this to come, come to fruition. And we've had a lot of people working very hard on the steering committee to be able to bring this to, to fruition as far as what we have. I think we're really close and I think you got some good points. But we've worked really hard to, to, to get our infrastructure in. I've got some comments on that later. Our staffs worked tirelessly. We didn't know what we were getting into with all this density. It was coming regardless. And we had a lot of old ordinances that didn't cover some of the stuff we're trying to fix now. We didn't go in and try to ruin anything. We're seeing and reacting to what was happening. And one of the biggest things, and I've said this many times, we've had some developers that would come through here. And do a great job and want to compete and have some nice neighborhoods. And then fast forward that, as we grew rapidly, we had some developers come through and do a very poor job. And we were depending on them to do a good job like they did before. And it just didn't happen. But now we're learning from that and shame on them for doing that. Because we've got some really bad looking product out there. So, you know, this is going to pull everybody in together and we're going to, we're going to make this work and move forward and have better looking product. And it's, it's just been a work in progress. You know, no county would have foreseen this kind of growth this fast. But it's going to take us all working together and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus and I, I don't want to be thrown under the bus either. A lot's happened in the past, but it's just a progression we've had from going from Mayberry to where we're at now. It's, it's, it's a massive change for everybody. So we're trying to catch, catch up with this and work hard and do the right things. And I think we're on the, on the right path.
I'm not, I'm not trying, I, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. I'm just saying, let, let's learn from, from what's happened.
Yes, that's what we're doing.
That's what I'm saying.
And I've spoken with you before about the punitive stuff and that's, we need that.
Protections in place prior to the adoptions. So for the buffers, for example, which was brought up, do we have?
The buffers were already decided, um, when we decided that Article three, uh, last year. Um, so that wasn't an issue un, uh, unless it was a specific item that we felt need to be adjusted as a result of the classification. Uh, the zoning classifications, um, that, uh, that, you know, we felt we wanted to readdress Article three again.
I'm talking about the disturbances.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm talking about too. And so, so, and, and let me just try and. See if I can clarify this. So, um, if the, there are thirteen sections of the zoning ordinance. Um, uh, we, um, as part of the last three year process have gone through all thirteen sections. The last section was arti, we did a little bit out of order. The last section was the most important one, which was Article five, which was the zoning classifications. Um, we, um, we felt that, um, and we presented to y'all in, um, the retreat. Um, that some public, more public input on that was necessary. Um, so all of those other items we did, we, we had addressed previously. Um, you know, that's everything from signs to, uh, to buffers to, um. Uh, you know, the, the process amendments, um, uh, all of that definitions, right? All of that was, um, was approved, uh, probably starting January of last year. Um, through, uh, maybe the, uh, I think the last one we did was maybe November or something to that effect. With the one, uh, with the one remaining. And that's why all of those changes, and there were substantial changes that we did to the buffers. Um, uh, are now in place right now. Uh, because we did them as we got, as we got ready, uh, as we got them established. So. Um, uh, and again, can we go back on the ones? Absolutely. And, um, but keep in mind, this is going to be a living document even after it's done. And so what we're running into right now, um, with the undisturbed buffers. Uh, is that the punitive, um, reestablishment of the buffers, which there is a punitive reestablishment of the buffers, right? So, and I can tell you what the difference is. So we, if you build a, um, more intensive use next to a residential use. And you're building it on a field with no trees on it. Um, you have to establish that buffer, um, planted even though it's not there. If it's there and you remove it. Um, uh, then there's the punitive, um, portion of that, which means, uh, it's, you know, it's more dense. Uh, it's, you know, it, it requires more, uh, more approval from the county, that sort of thing. Is that enough? Absolutely not. What we're running into now is we're running into folks who. And in some cases, it was intentional. In some cases, it was accidental. I get that. Um, but, uh, there, there needs to be a financial penalty, penalty, I think as well. Um, so that you have to meet the punitive requirement of reestablishing that buffer and there are lists of, of, um, of vegetation. Uh, that's listed in the ordinance. Um, they, they can't just put anything in there that they want. Um, there, and so they're, they, they have to meet the punitive and the financial, uh, burden of paying for that. And I agree. Um, but that's not part of what we're doing now. We have to, if you want that addressed. We're going to have to come up with an amendment for Article three, um, to address that buffer issue. And I agree that it should be, uh, it should be addressed, but it's not part of the zoning classifications that we're doing right now. Uh, and so I just wanted to kind of make that, and it's also not really part of what I've asked, what we've asked the steering committee to address. Now, the steering committee does want to look into some areas of, uh, addressing buffers with regard, for, they've mentioned to me. Um, with regards to, uh, with regards to residential, particularly how it fronts, um, uh, collector or artery roads. Um, but it's not some, they're not, they're, they're not coming back to us with a full rewrite of the buffer ordinance. Um, because that's, that's not what they were charged to do. So, uh, if we need to do that as staff, we can do it. Um, just tell us what you want, um, and we can, we can beef up the, the punishment, uh, for disturbing the buffer. Um, absolutely.
Do it.
Well, Tim, I just want to say, uh, thank you to staff because as you've said and Commissioner Burdette has said. There's been a lot of time put into this and I know we have talked about buffers a lot at our retreats. And I just appreciate what y'all have done up to this point.
Now, what I want to, I just got to say. I don't think any of us are going to have the perfect ordinance that is one hundred percent what we want because I don't think we'll all ever agree on that. Um, and if we wait around on that, we're probably not going to change ordinances. Um, this, you know, um. I don't know. That, that's, that's just, yeah, we, we can, we can tweak and twerk, but it's just.
Like our county manager said, this is a living, breathing document and we're going to have to keep adding and adjusting. Because we could get this thing perfect and somebody come up with some other way to get around it. And it's going to happen over and over again. We're going to have to keep fixing it as we go. Uh, as soon as we have all our, uh, ordinances in place and they're, they look tight. A builder will find a way around something else and then we got to plug that loophole.
If I, if, if I drafted this to be the perfect ordinance, to me, y'all aren't going to think that. You know, y'all aren't going to have the same, same view.
But I agree with, you know, not kind of, you mean to miss Beth, love her.
And I believe that there, there is room for improvement.
We talked about this punitive stuff because it really angers me that somebody physically go into a buffer. And I was speaking about the apartment complex on Goshen and destroy the buffer purposefully. There would be no way.
Happened on Augusta Road too recently and we've been addressing that.
Total disregard for our county and people around them. This is right next to, uh, a childcare center.
Take care.
Just blows my mind.
Well, that's need to know the fact that it's happening is not deterring, says we need to escalate it and go ahead and get it done. Um, so let's, let's just get it done.
And there may not be enough repercussions to keep people from doing that right now. That's what we need to tighten up on.
We got to incentivize them in their pocketbook to not do it anymore. Um.
She's right. You can't fix it after that.
With that, we're not approving a buffer ordinance tonight.
Right.
You're right. And I don't, I don't want to get.
I mean, they're all symbiotic of each other because buffers are part of every zoning thing it is.
Right.
Um, you know.
But we've got to, I mean.
But, but, but we are, you are looking at approving, you know, that if you're looking at the, the ARs, even though there's no moratorium on them. You're looking at maybe doing something with them or tabling it. But on the Bs, I mean, you're looking at, you know, these are the ones that, that, and we discussed this a little bit last time about the sidewalks being required everywhere. You know, that's something I think we need to review before we approve that because it would be sort of simple. You know, this is Commissioner Ford and I agree upon, you know, you got a business out in the middle of nowhere and I got to put a sidewalk in front of it? You know, I, I do think there, those are the kind of little things I feel like we're not really clear on. And I, and I, you know, even some of the setbacks, you know, that I could sit here and go through, which I don't think this is the time for it. That's why I'm saying, I think, I think we need a, a, a longer workshop session to try to just address a few of these things without just voting on it tonight. And then having to come back later and say we made a mistake. That's what I'm saying.
It wouldn't be a one size fits, fits all. I mean, if you have.
And I'm, no, you're not going to fit, you're not going to fit everything and, and I certainly.
They could get a variance for a sidewalk if they don't, if it doesn't fit.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, but you're mandating it.
They can make a payment in lieu of putting the sidewalk into.
Yeah, into a tree fund.
Yeah, but even making a payment, why should, why should I have to make a payment when my business is sitting out here in the middle of nowhere? I don't even agree with, I don't, I don't, I don't see why you should penalize a business because I happen to be. Further out and not connecting or something, you know?
And, and again, these are just recommendations from the steering committee. So they can be amended. So.
Yeah, but, but you're getting ready to put them in place and then you're going to go back and amend them.
You can amend it before approval.
But you want me to start? You want to do that tonight? That's what I'm saying. I just don't feel we're ready and I'll stop with that. I just don't feel we're ready to do this tonight and I'd like to see it tabled.
Okay. All right.
Or, yeah, move to.
In the interest of moving forward, um, I'm going to entertain a motion at this time.
Right. I'll make a mo, motion that we table this second reading until we can have more input and a workshop to discuss it further to make sure. We've got everything we need to do.
Do I have a second?
Since we're on a tight timeline, I mean, what, how long would we? Table it to, because we're looking at not having the first meeting in July, correct?
Yeah, it would probably be the second meeting in July.
I could live with the second meeting in July. That would give us time to, to vote and make sure everything. And then have it in place before the August moratorium.
With that, would we?
Well, we would need to have a longer workshop, correct?
Yes.
Like an old day.
Yeah, it probably, and I know nobody else to hear that, but I'm saying, I just. I just don't feel that as a commission, we've had enough time to discuss this in our shorter workshop and we only had one.
With that too, would you, would we want to go ahead and add in, uh, go ahead and stiffening our. You know, our laters of the buffers, go ahead and get that ready as well.
I can get that, well, we do have to publicly notice that, so I can't guarantee that it's on the, um, next meeting.
What about the July, by July fifteenth, so I'm talking about consolidating everything into one area here?
We could.
I mean, we rushed, we can rush that and should, but again, that's flavor of the day because something, it's going to be something else next month that's, needs to be.
Um.
And that's, that's why this is a living.
While we're talking about this, do want to point out a couple of things. I know Chelsea and Olive's met on the general truck parking. I thought we were going to get rid of that and the, the Bs. But now it's still in the Bs.
Um.
Because I don't want a trucking company in a, in a B area.
Yes, sir. I did send an updated version of the table of permitted uses for your practice.
I didn't get that. It's not on the agenda. Those, those three, that, that one and the heavy equipment. Because we're going to handle that in the rural business if it's small. There'd be a way to do that if you had somebody with two trucks and they're out in the middle of nowhere. But, uh, but general truck parking is a trucking company. But this one, the one I have on, on the agenda still has it on there.
Yeah, and I think that's because it's from the old business, um, from the last meeting. Um, so we would be amending the TPU for the new changes. Um, we can, I mean, again, if we're tabling it, we can, we can make sure you have a copy of.
The current one, so we know what we're looking at.
Yeah, the, it's not the current one that you're looking at because you're looking at the one that was on the agenda from the last, from the last meeting.
All right, thank you.
Is it possible by July fifteenth to buffer disturbance? Rogers?
Yeah, that's done. What Roger wants is already done.
Yeah, that one we would just have to amend, right, correct?
Correct, amend when you approve it.
And then, um, maybe we'd have time by that time to look at a tree ordinance as well.
I think a tree ordinance, we, we, we did, I mean, that's, that I, my recommendation is, don't try and get the tree ordinance. On that timeframe because I think that's going to be a lot more debate because the members had already gone through that before. Yes. What'd you say?
But definitely before the Rs.
Yeah, I think we, we may be able to at least try and have a first reading, uh, on the, at the August meeting of that, but. It's going to require a lot more feedback, um, because we.
Well, let's put it on the workshop then, discussion about that.
What I would do.
I've got a draft I'll send you, just that I have found.
And, and we have a draft, um, of one that we've done and we can show you. Um, you know, we, we've done one that we tried to get feedback from folks and. Some folks wanted incentive based, some folks, uh, some of the board members wanted it, um, you know, just a, a requirement based. Um, and so it was kind of, you know, it was a lot of back and forth.
This is a mix of a fund slash ordinance, so.
Yeah.
So we are set to come out of the moratorium as of now, the first meeting in August, correct?
Correct.
So when, when are we planning to hear the Rs?
Um, we were planning on presenting those in the second meeting and, I mean, the, what? The, the one meeting that we're having in July. Um, and then at a, at the, our goal was to present at the workshop there. Um, and then, uh, put it, and then advertise it before that so that we could be on the, uh, first meeting in August approval.
Can we incorporate on that time on July fifteenth?
Yeah, it's going, I mean, if, if you want to do it kind of a, as where we go through everything.
Three on threes.
Um, we can, uh, we can do that because I think the. Uh, again, I mean, we could present it to y'all. Um, um, but, um, you know, at the, in between, after us presenting it. Um, you know, you, you, you all got to digest it. Um, uh, decide if you want to tweak it, uh, and then, and then kind of let us know. Um, but now that I'm thinking about it, we're not going to be able to make the August meeting because we got to go through second, we got to go through two readings.
Right.
Might have to be the second.
And not supposed to be out of the country.
So we would probably have to extend it to the second meeting in August, um, in order to incorporate. Um, uh, what? The, the ARs, the, um, the, uh, the ARs, Bs, Is and Rs. The one that's probably not going to get approved in that round and the, and a, um, and a moratorium may have to continue on is the mixed uses of the PD. Um, because the PD incorporates everything you approved in all those other districts. And so we then have to, after everything gets approved, we have to, we have to take all those pieces and, and create a PD district. So. Um, but that can be done in a, in a, you know, a month afterwards.
Well, as the chairman, uh, suggested, maybe it's a good idea to have three on threes, um, before that workshop also. Just to have another layer there.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
We can go ahead and send out some tentative dates then for that, uh, starting. Next week or a week after.
If we want to just, just discuss what we've accomplished so far, um, we have our next steering committee meeting next week, is it?
Thursday.
This week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have our next steer, we're going to start to address the Rs this week, but we're not going to get. Um, we'll probably get into the single family stuff, but not, not into the multi-family stuff. So, so anytime after this week. We will have the ARs, Bs, Is and maybe R one and R five.
The, the more you have available for our lengthy workshop, the less discussion we'll have to have here. At a commission meeting because we will have hashed out a lot of the stuff that's being brought up tonight.
Right.
At that workshop. But I do want to make sure that workshop has a, a public, a public session attached to it.
Yeah.
That, that those people that want to come in and talk about what we're doing will have an opportunity to do that.
And let's make sure that Forrest and Beth are one of the three on threes together.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So, um, just F.
So, um, just FYI, you do have a little more breathing room for that first meeting in August. The moratorium doesn't expire until the eleventh of August, so you have that first meeting in August as well.
When's the second meeting in August?
Second meeting in August is the nineteenth.
Yeah, so what I think we'll do at the next meeting, um, is, um, extend the moratorium, um, to the nineteenth. Uh, so that way it gives us that second meeting in August to, uh, get a second reading of the ordinance done. And then, uh.
We'll get three on threes as we continue.
And then we'll have all summer to work that out.
Yeah. Okay. Assuming that's the motion on the floor.
Yeah, there was a motion on the floor, but no.
I think it started and then got into a discussion, so, uh, I'm going back to, I'll entertain a motion.
I said I wanted to table, um, the second reading until we have an opportunity to have a more lengthy workshop opportunity for public, um, input at that workshop. And of course, the presentation by the people on the district on whatever's cor- ready to go and then we can talk and rehash everything.
Do we, does she need to add the date, July fifteenth? Okay.
That we'll have it ready by July fifteenth, is that what you're saying?
I, no, I, I think we have to do it at the.
First reading in August.
At the first reading in August so that we can have the, well, actually, this is the second reading.
Yeah, but we could still do it so we wouldn't be, because I know we're gonna run into some conflicts with vacations.
Okay.
I would assume.
So if we set this one.
If we set this to the first reading in August, then?
And then we set the Rs and at this, we'll have the second reading on this, the first meeting in August. We'll have the first reading on the remainder, uh, first meeting in August and then we'll have the second re- meeting on the remainder, which is the Rs on the second meeting in August.
And that'll go separate from the moratorium.
So we would table this one to the first meeting in August. Gotcha.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Item number six.
What was the date you gave us tabled?
Oh, sorry. I'm gonna move that one to.
First meeting, okay, okay.
Fifth.
But we're gonna hear the fifteenth, so you're gonna hear the Rs, I think, is what he said.
Item number six is a second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading to amend Article Two definitions of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances. First reading approved, May fifth, excuse me, May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. No discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
And, and this is just the.
Just all the words.
The definitions of the stuff that's already in the table of printed uses, so, um.
And that part got updated, so.
Yes, it was pretty.
Yeah, but the, the TPU hasn't been updated, but the definitions are the same regardless. We've updated a few definitions based on our conversation, but other than that, they're the same.
Yeah, those look good.
Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number seven is a public hearing. Consideration to approve an application by Caitlin Cavalo for a variance from section five dot one dot four to allow for a decrease in the minimum, required minimum setbacks for AR1 located in one twenty Francis Street, map number two three five A, parcel number forty-five into third district. This was postponed from our May twentieth meeting.
Thank you. Kimberly Barlett, community planner. The applicant requests a variance to decrease the required setbacks in AR1 zoning due to the unusual shape of the parcel. The current AR1 setbacks are fifty feet in the front, fifty in the rear, and twenty-five on the sides. This parcel is currently vacant, a non-conforming lot totaling point six nine acres. The applicant would like to request a variance of ten feet in the front and fifteen to the rear of the property line. And just FYI, they are doing a mobile home, which is, um, gonna be thirty-two by eighty feet. And they have already put in their septic permit with Department of Health. And the staff has reviewed the application and it is complete.
Thank you. Ms. Cavalo, if you're here, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, environmental health.
Come forward, please, and state your name for the record.
Caitlin Cavalo, um, we had a, uh, issue with environmental health approving the size of our home per the lot. So we had to buy a three-bedroom, two-bath instead of having the thirty-two by eighty-five bedroom house, so it is a smaller house now.
Okay. What size? What size now?
Thirty-two.
Less than thirty-two by eighty?
Yeah, significantly, yes.
Gotcha. Very good. Any questions, guys?
Yeah, I do. Um, I called you a couple of weeks ago for the last meeting. And I've got residents around there that are concerned about you being able to put the well and septic tank at a proper distance that you need to. So I committed to them that I would have some type of sketch design of that because you have to have that anyway for environmental health to sign off on. So I tabled it to tonight because I wanted to have that to discuss with environmental health. So I would come through with my promise to some of the surrounding neighbors that I'd looked at that and had a discussion with environmental health. So with that being said, I, I don't have it.
Oh, our contractor sent that over to the health department.
We.
To the health department, not us.
We don't have it. So what, what, what I will, so what I, so what I will do is I've already requested to table it one time. You can request to table one time as well. If you want to request it, to table it, I, I will support that. I can't offer to table it again.
But what if I have the version of the sketch?
I have not reviewed it with environmental health.
So who does it need to be sent to?
Uh, Stephen Andrews.
Yes, sir. If he's in environmental health, I talked with him directly last week.
They're saying they do not have, do not have it on file. I checked today.
Would you like to send a copy to, would Stephanie be adequate for that to receive?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, you can send it to our clerk, but I just gave my word to those surrounding folks that I was gonna look at that, have a conversation with environmental health. So if you can send that to our clerk, I will get it from her and I will have a discussion. But if you want to table it to next meeting, I mean, I'm.
That'll be June seventeenth.
Yeah.
What would be the, if I sent it over to her, what would be the, what'd it look like?
Well, our next meeting is June seventeenth, so it would be June seventeenth and old business. It would be at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you can provide that, I'm sorry to be difficult, but I gave those folks my word that I would, at bare minimum, look at that drawing.
Okay. Do I have access to that email or anything, or sent it to her?
Yes, Ms., um, Ms. Johnson will get it to you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And just for formality, you're requesting we table this until the, the June seventeenth meeting. Perfect. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to accept the request?
Yes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the request to table this to our next meeting, June seventeenth.
I'll second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Moving into new business, item number one. Consideration to approve the intergovernmental agreements to conduct the November twenty twenty-five municipal elections for Rincon, Guyton, and Springfield and the December twenty, two, twenty twenty-five runoff election for Guyton, if necessary, by the Effingham County Board of Commissioners, elections.
Good evening.
Hello.
Laura Bassett, Director of Elections. So the three municipalities approached the Board of Elections in January requesting for us to hold their municipal elections for this year. And again, it does address the Guyton runoff in December as well. And, um, so the Board of Elections and all the municipalities have already approved the, uh, contracts, so it's just here for you guys now.
Very good. Any discussion?
I make a motion, we accept, uh, Ms. Bassett's, um, agreement, intergovernmental agreement.
Sorry, I guess I was supposed to say that about the, uh, staff and Board of Elections, um, um, request alternative one to approve the intergovernmental agreements.
I make a motion to accept alternative one.
I'll second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two, consideration to approve the first reading of the accessory dwelling units definitions.
Uh, yes, sir. So one of the primary recommendations that did come out of the committee, um, the steering committee is the need for the accessory dwelling units. Um, as you can see, um, the definitions and the visual aids give detail to what zoning district and size the accessory dwelling unit, um, can be. Um, accessory dwelling units will allow the county to maintain its rural character while also providing alternative housing options. So staff does recommend alternative number one to approve the first reading.
And this is gonna be accessory dwelling units in all zonings that, that we have coming up? I mean, this is just defining what it is.
Yeah, we break it apart, um, what's acceptable in each zoning district. Um, because, um, an accessory dwelling district in AR1 is, uh, is, oh, I mean, it's already a, uh, a mobile home, right? Um, but you could have, um, uh, but you could have a, you know, a detached garage with an apartment on top, that sort of thing. So your definitions of accessory dwelling unit for AR districts are gonna be a little bit more broad um, than the R districts, which are pretty much limited to, if, if it's not attached to your home. Uh, and it's a, uh, it's a, um, it's an apartment above a detached garage and that's it.
So, so what happens, um, this could be a dumb question, but, so what happens in the R districts? And say, you get a neighborhood that has accessory dwelling units almost on every lot and they rent it out for rental property? I don't know if, I mean, a primary homeowner would, would definitely do that at, all in a neighborhood, but that's just something that comes to mind. And, and there may be something in place to stop that. I, I don't know.
Um, yeah, and, um. So, I mean, I, I can get, you know, I'll give you an example of, of a place that I used to live at. I mean, nearly every detached garage, um, when, when the houses were built, um, had, um, uh, had a, you know, a little four hundred square foot studio apartment on top of it. Uh, and so, um, you know, it was an option for the builder during construction. Um, so, um, technically, we allowed them. Um, but, uh, but the issue that's been restricting them has been the design requirements that we dealt with in, um, uh, about the height requirements of the, uh, of the. Of the accessory structure. Previously prevented you from really having a, um, a, a height that would, uh, be, allow you to put a, anything up on the second floor of a garage. We've now kind of, uh, made, allowed garages to be much higher. Um, and so, um, it's just a, you know, I, I, I think what we're trying to do is come up with a, with a concrete definition of it and what's acceptable. And so that when we put the requirements for ADUs, um, in the, well, when we amend the requirements for the ADUs in the, um, zoning, uh, classifications, uh, we will then have a concrete definition of what is a, what is an accessory dwelling unit. So it's a little bit, uh, um.
And how, how will these be taxed? Are they gonna be taxed as a second home or?
Yeah, it's.
I've, I've got that question and.
Fortunately, yes. If it's detached, it will and, um, and, you know, that's what I think is the legal struggle is that, um, what, under Georgia state law, if you're not in, if you're not in complete control, meaning if you lease out, if you have a formal lease, um, for a, uh, a part of what is now your homestead, you violate your homestead.
Violates the homestead.
Uh, and you, um, and then you, um, you, you, you will have to give up that, uh, that, that homestead, uh, classification. So it's a, it's a, it's a complicated issue, so I think that is probably gonna prevent more people from doing this than any sort of ordinance or, or definition requirement. Uh, because if you, if you've got an AR one piece of property and it's your homestead and you rent out a, a unit on it, from what I was told by the assessor, it, uh, uh, it negates your homestead because you're no longer in control and you have not, uh, you've not subdivided that property out.
Okay, well, this, this is a very pointed question for a pointed situation. Um, I'm sure, sure it's a come up war in, in mine and Beth's district, but, so say if someone had a, um, accessory dwelling unit and their grandkids just stay there on weekends.
No, they're not giving up control, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're fine because.
So they're fine then?
Yeah, because, uh, they're not technically giving up control with, you have to do that via lease, uh, or a leasehold in some way, shape, or form.
So the lease is the key?
Well, leasehold, so leasehold interest, and I'm not an attorney, but Lee can, you know, is kind of the key that you're giving up control somehow, uh, of that property by giving a leasehold interest, uh, to, to somebody else.
Neil's gone, right? So to.
But that's for the ta, that's nothing we, I mean, that's for the tax.
That's something we could control.
Yeah, we don't have.
But it's something, that'd be a question for Neil.
Yes.
Yes.
Or somebody in his office, okay.
And they all probably will have homestead because, like, in AR, you have to be the primary landowner to live in the primary home, right?
That's right.
That was the whole idea, so they all pretty much will be homesteaded.
I don't know if that was the right time to ask those questions, but.
No, that came up in the conversation about, about the accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, so, so detached units aren't getting a separate address or anything, correct?
No, they don't necessarily have to be a different address. Um, you can have a different address in AR1 properties. You can get assigned, uh, even without subdividing it out, uh, you can get assigned a, uh, two different addresses on a single piece of property. Um, but, uh, um, so it, uh, so that's kind of a separate rules that are, that are set by the, by the post office.
So, I'm entertaining motions.
Well, this, well, this is defining, I guess, what the different, different scenarios are. Um, so, I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries.
These are moot point until we approve what we tabled earlier, right?
That's what I was kinda worried about because they're all bundled together. All right, moving on to item number three.
Yeah, I guess we can't do that, can we?
Oh, sorry. Uh, we're gonna take a five-minute recess and we will meet back here at seven twenty-eight. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will meet back here at 7:28.
We were so close.
I keep looking down there and it's like Forrest isn't back yet.
He's not here.
Going to call the meeting back to order. Left off at new business item number three. Consideration to approve a resolution zero two five dash zero one seven to release an auditorium on rezoning for B one, B two, B three, LI, HI districts or classifications.
That, that, that would be have to be tabled till the first meeting in August.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we table this till the first meeting in August.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Unopposed, motion carries, and that was?
That was to the second, the first meeting in August.
The first, the first.
That's the first.
First, okay.
First meeting because, because you need two, right?
Yeah, it's August fifth.
No, the, this one just from, because we're doing the second reading of, of the ARs, Bs, and Is at the first meeting, so then we can release it at that meeting. And then the second meeting, we will do the second reading of the Rs.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And so we can release it there.
That was Beth and Jamie. Motion in second.
Got it.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to new business item number five, consideration to award a contract.
Uh, four.
Sorry.
We did four.
Oh, we did already?
Yeah, it was the budget.
Oh, that's right, we did that.
Stay in your lane, Tim.
I'm sorry.
Item number five, uh, consideration to award a contract to JA Long Incorporated for the construction of single lane roundabouts at intersections of Hodgville Road with Collichamley Road and Goshen Road in accordance with invitation to bid number twenty-five dash ITB dash zero seven three.
Yes, Jonathan Holm, county engineer for Effingham. Um, Effingham County issued invitation to bid, uh, number twenty-five dash ITB dash seventy-three for the construction of two roundabouts, um, at, uh, Hodgville-Goshen and Hodgville-Collichamley. We received one bid, um, and the, the bid total was for six million eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-four cent. The two, uh, roundabouts Hodgville-Collichamley was roughly three point four million, and then the, um, Hodgville-Goshen was two point six. The total contract duration, um, is eighteen months for two roundabouts. And, uh, staff, after reviewing, um, this, this is in line with, um, how much we're, you know, budgeting, about three million for single lane roundabout. So staff, you know, is recommending, um, approval, um, despite having the one, uh, bid. The other thing to note, um, JA Long is the contractor. This contractor is currently working on the Hodgville Blue Jay Roundabout to the north. Um, and they're already mobilized and starting to work on that as well, so, um, in my opinion, I think having one contractor controlling all three roundabout constructions on Hodgville, uh, makes a lot of sense.
True.
So.
Know anything bad about, you haven't heard anything bad about these people? I mean, are they?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Have they done anything?
They've done some work, um, in our region, um, over in Bullock County, um, with GDOT, and, um, they've seemed to do a pretty good well job. And it sounds like with the amount of roundabouts that we have coming down the pipeline, we'll probably be, uh, hopefully dealing with them, um, in the future, so.
Maybe that will give them good incentive to do a good job.
That's right, yes, ma'am, and, uh, contractor is, uh, aware, um, of more roundabouts to come.
And, um, we did have a candid conversation, um, before we got the bid, um, about, he was concerned about,
you know, he had heard that he might be the only bid, and I urged him to, you know, hey, give us the, give us your best price, you know, if we can, you know, come to an agreement and it's within reason, I don't see a reason why we would want to rebid it as long as it's within the budgeted, um, amount that we were looking to get, so.
Why, why do you think we just got one bid?
I think, um, due to the complexity of this contract, we had a lot of attention. We had about five, um, different, uh, representatives from different contractors for this project, so there was a lot of interest up front. Um, I think with the two roundabouts being really close to one another, um, and there is a tight timeframe of eighteen months for two roundabouts, it, it was probably what, um, you know, deterred, um, the other contractors.
I would have thought it would have been nice having two jobs right by each other, but I.
Right.
I guess they think different, they have different.
That's right, um, just when you think you figured out what the contractor's thinking, they throw you a curveball, so, anyway.
Got you.
Just for the public, we met today, Jonathan and, uh, Tim and I, um, can we refocus them from Blue Jay Hodgville to this double roundabout? It was one thing we talked about today, and this is for public as well as, as all of us. Uh, eighteen months is a heck of a long time to have a single lane there. It's gonna create some major problems, uh, with schools let back in. So we talked about the possibility of being able to, and they've just started, so if we're gonna catch them now, it's the time to catch them. Get them on those two main thoroughfews, um, get them focused on that and see if we can squeeze that time into a year. We could squeeze that time into a year, work with them in some way where we can do that. Then by the time we're done, we'll be able to start school of twenty-twenty-seven with fresh roundabouts right there. If not, we're gonna be in the school year again. So I think that's a huge deal, um, with, that's probably our biggest pain point in Effingham. When you go from Blue Jay to thirty, you pick up all of Belmont Glen and a bunch of other neighborhoods trying to go through there. So it's, I think it's massive to be able to move that there, so if we could do that, like what we're talking about today or, and all the things we're talking about, that would be a, a big win for us over there.
I recommend, um, us moving forward with this contract as is.
Yes, so we can, yeah, I'm not saying change this, because I don't wanna hold any.
But we can certainly.
If I can, um, on this, I would probably recommend that we have the conversation about, um, uh, a spent, uh, uh, a time, some sort of, uh, incentive-based, um, uh, uh, payment towards them, uh, for cutting this timeline. Uh, and then, uh, seeing if we can, um, uh, because they did express interest in that when they won the, um, when they won the Blue Jay one. So if that's the case and, um, and we can come to some agreement on something that's reasonable, uh, for getting this done, uh, before the start of school year next year, uh, then, uh, then we can just easily approach you all, um, by, uh, amending the agreement, doing a change order to allow for that.
Okay, that would be great, and if you wanna compare the cost of these two at six million, we're spending seven million on one on the Parkway. So this basically happened. It's expensive, but I think we would have, I don't think any constituent would, would frown upon us giving them an incentive to finish earlier.
Yeah, to get it fast.
We need the relief. So that, that's a great idea, Tim.
Very good. With that, no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number six, consideration to approve and publish new job descriptions and job titles for facilities maintenance.
Good evening, Sarah Mousoff, Director of Human Resource Services. Tonight for facilities maintenance, we have two proposed new job titles and job descriptions. These go along with the new budget, um, Mr. Ted has proposed to ask for these. The one, as you can see, is a level three, and this is creating kind of some opportunity and growth path for our current staff with a focus on electrical side. Um, and then a crew leader, kind of giving him a supervisor role, um, to oversee the current staff as, you know, he can't always be out in the field with the guys. And so if you have any questions, Ted is actually here tonight, so he could answer them for you.
What do you think, I see Ms. and Sarah as minimum qualifications?
On which one, let's see?
Let's see. On worker three.
Three, hold on.
And worker.
No, they're both there. So on worker three, it's on page.
Okay, I'm sorry, extend it over to the next page, I see it now.
Yep.
Okay, so we're agreeing, got it. Then... Got it. That line, always move my lines down.
Gotcha.
My headers, I'm sorry.
You're okay, you're okay.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion from the board, if not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number seven, consideration to approve and publish new job description and job titles for development services.
Okay, good evening, Sarah Mousoff again, Director of Human Resource Services. Again, same thing, two new job descriptions, um, these would be for promotions for current staff. Um, so currently we have a permit tech, um, this would, uh, allow her to move up and oversee support staff. And then, um, the senior planner, we currently do have that job title, but we've kind of tweaked this a little bit and, and modified some of the qualifications, um, and so here to answer any questions that you may have.
I think I'm good on that one.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, item number eight, consideration to approve the reappointment of Lucy Powell and the appointment of Rebecca Boston to the Aging Services Council.
Yes, sir, you just said it, um, Ms. Lucy Powell is a long time serving rep on this board. Um, she is willing to continue until someone's able to replace her. Ms. Rebecca Boston would be an appointment, um, we received her details, which is included in your packet. These terms of office will expire June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-eight if reappointed.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion.
I know both ladies, and I make a recommendation that we approve as presented.
Second.
Everybody's second. All in favor?
Uh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Pick one, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Item number nine, consideration to appoint Joanna Catrell, Catre, okay. Cartrettle?
Catrill, it's actually a T.
Catrill?
It's two Ts, not an L.
Okay.
I think, Catret.
Catret, and reappoint Hank Heller as representative for library board.
Yes, sir, again, similar situation, Mr. Hank Heller represents District Five, has been on the board for some time. Ms. Joanna will be replacing Ms., um, Bridget Neesmith as representative for District Two. Um, these terms of office will, it's a three-year appointment, so they will go through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-eight as well.
Okay. Very good. Um, this brings up a point, Tim. I would like to get some three-on-threes with the library board at some point, too, so.
Uh, yes. And, um, I can have, Marie is gonna reach you out on, um, maybe we can try and do, we can try and schedule these um, so that they are back-to-back, but we, we are looking at doing, um, that for the library board, um, of at least, uh, one meeting with, uh, with the hospital and also obviously on this, um, zoning, um, three-on-three meeting, uh, three and three meetings.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we, um, we've got a couple people here from the library, I think one may, do any of y'all wanna say anything about that last item on the vote? Are y'all good, or?
Oh, right here.
I'm pretty sure they.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Landrum, um, Effingham resident and director of technical services for Live Oak Public Libraries. Bridget Neesmith thought that she was approved for reappointment, so whenever we saw this appointment of Joanna Cartritt, we thought that maybe that was replacing the City of Guyton representative, so we will, either we will inform or you all will inform Bridget that she was not.
I've been emailing with her.
Okay, as of this afternoon, she didn't know she wasn't reappointed, so.
All right, so she, she knows?
Yes, she's aware.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? All right, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the appointment and the reappointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Unopposed, motion carries. Item number ten, consideration to approve to cancel the July first, twenty-twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting. Sure this will have a lot of discussion.
I was curious as to why we're doing it, actually. I'll probably go be the stick in the mud here, but it's like on Tuesday, and I mean, it's... Does it run into something?
I'm gonna be in that, I'll be, I mean.
I, actually, I'm gonna be out of the country on the, on the second meeting, so, and, because I thought we were gonna do the first this time.
Okay.
I think I will actually be gone, but.
I'll be here.
I mean.
But I'll be here for that.
Does it make sense to, can you move it to the middle?
That's, that's up to y'all. I mean, this is something that.
Well, if we do that, we got to change, um, don't we have something for the fifteenth? Uh, didn't we have something tonight? We were gonna listen to the Rs on the fifteenth, or?
Yes, yeah, we're doing that on the second meeting.
No, we can keep that, that gives us more time if we keep it on the fifteenth, but what we could do is have a, if we had that meeting, we could potentially have a, um, uh, what do you call that session, um?
Workshop.
Workshop before, because I just had to, we have to have a, we, Jonathan wanted to have a workshop on the transportation master plan update, um, and I kinda had to put that off because of all the zoning stuff, so, um, but it's, it's, it's entirely up to y'all. I'm here no matter what.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we'd have a quorum present, um, for that date of July first.
I mean, use, every time I've been on the board, you know, the fourth is usually close to the weekend, and we take that off, which, but this one was just...
What am I doing?
I'm not blaming, uh, I, we got work to do, so I don't mind being here if I can be here, you know, and then.
Very good. Yeah, we got a lot of work to do, um.
I mean, if y'all, I don't, like I said, I don't wanna be the stick in the mud that does that.
It's too late, Roger, it's already happened.
I'm sorry. Tell me, man, please, I just.
Mr. Muddy Stick.
All the staff out there is tears.
I know, I'm sorry, guys.
I, I believe that suggesting came from staff, didn't it, Stephanie?
Not from me.
Yeah. Stephanie told me to say that.
That's, that's, I mean, I'm not one to gossip, but that's what I heard.
I'd make these guys work on weekends if I had the choice.
Very good, um, I will entertain a motion on this, guys.
Oh, is it consistent as we don't, we're gonna have it? Do I make a motion that we don't cancel? Is that what you say?
What did we say?
Roger, you're the one that needs to make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do a motion to deny. Go ahead and finish this one.
We're gonna claim it on him.
If there's no motion.
I'll make a motion to deny. Forget a second.
I'll second it for you.
Jamie's second, and you're not gonna be here.
That's right. Hey, let's have a meeting.
Well, Jamie will be teams calling in.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion in the second to not, to hold the meeting July first. Clear, all in favor?
Uh.
Unopposed, see y'all July first. All right, moving into item number twelve, uh, reports from Commissioners' administrative staff, Tim, we'll start with you.
Um, yeah, just, uh, briefly, happy birthday?
Yay!
Um, I do have.
Yeah, we got two of us today, I'm gonna...
Happy birthday.
The chairman's birthday, so.
Oh, well, thank you, sir.
Um, I do have several items for, uh, executive session, so I can, I can, uh, wait to discuss them then.
Great. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Burdette.
Uh, just wanted to mention a couple quick things, I know we got a lot to do, uh, we talked about, it's, this for the public knowledge more than anything, uh, found out today, Goshen is gonna be a bigger undertaking than what we thought. And correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, there is no aggregate under that thing, so we're gonna have to do a full depth reclamation and take the whole thing up and redo the whole.
That, that, that's correct, and so it's a similar situation that we have on, uh, the northern part of McCall, uh, where when the roadbed was put down, it was just asphalt over clay. Uh, so while we were able to resurface Blue Jay, uh, and use the base, um, on that.
There's no base.
There's no base, uh, on, on Goshen, so the consultant had recommended a full-depth reclamation on that section anyway. Uh, but it, it is one of the things that complicates the road.
Yeah.
That and right-of-way.
That, that concern was with right-of-way and the mountain that we're, we're, we're trying to acquire, but we're, we're addressing a lot more than just, uh, a three-lane road. We're addressing, uh, sewage that we're trying to run along there, drainage and the future bike and pedestrian trails. So, you know, Goshen's a busy road as it is, and we need, we need places for people to be able to walk safely or run safely or whatever they wanna do, or, now, we don't have it, it's dangerous to walk on the side.
And, and if I can give a quick update on that, we did receive, um, the ninety percent plans, which was the obligation of the designer, um, uh, last week, um, and so they, uh, just got it in under their timeline. Uh, and, um, the, um, the right-of-way, uh, contact acquisition, I mean, uh, contact and connect flagging, uh, beginning to put the flags down, um, that has started.
Thank you, that's all I have, just wanted to update public on that.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Mr. Deluch.
Do we have an update from DOT on the temporary red light at Highway eighty in Sand Hill?
Yes, I just got, actually got one today, and actually, um, uh, Speaker Burns called me about it this morning. Um, we are, um, we, we obviously were waiting, what had held that up was, uh, the, uh, poles for the electrical line. The contractor, I believe, started the work last week, um, got a little bit of delay because of, uh, the holes that they bored in there got filled up with water. Um, but I believe we may be able to get that, uh, we think before the end of this month, um, up and running.
Yeah, you're referring to the, uh, twenty-one, um, McCall.
Yeah.
But you were asking about.
Highway eighty and.
But I am curious about that one, so if you wanna.
Yeah, yeah, both, yeah, yeah.
It's true.
Curious on both.
Well, I have an update on that, too, but now that you have an update on, um, McCall, that is the, by the end of the month, we anticipate we should be able to.
Yes, sir, yeah, we're, there, there's some concern, um, with the weather that we got the previous week, it, it made the whole complicated.
So the lights will actually be up by the end of the month?
That's the goal, yes, sir.
Okay.
But we're, that, that's still, we're on track to do it, but it's gonna be tight. Um, I'm trying to, you know, get as many strings pulled as I can to, you know, get the check off from Georgia Power and GDOT, um, and ourselves, too, we're involved, um, from a permitting standpoint to get this thing done contractually by the end of June.
And on Sand Hill, just to give you an update on that, I did get a, a letter to sign, um, to GDOT, uh, this week, um, uh, basically saying that if they were to approve the light there, um, that the county, this is what we, we do with the lights on, uh, on twenty-one as well, uh, and that light on McCall, that the county, you know, would be, would be providing the power for them, uh, et cetera, on that. But, uh, they have not, uh, formally made a decision on putting the, uh, temporary step in there of putting the traffic light. They have to go through their GDOT process.
Okay. Um, thank you to whoever, uh, led the charge on getting those, um, two spots on Honey Ridge Road patched, Jonathan, I don't know if it was you or Tim, or if it wasn't either one of y'all, hey, thanks to whoever it was, I rode down Honey Ridge last week, and it seemed like they did a, did a good job, that was needed. Um, Chelsea, do you, do we know why the lady on Green Morgan School Road, is she just gonna do a larger lot so she doesn't have to rezone now? I, I was caught off guard with the withdrawal.
Um, yes, sir, so the current ordinance right now reads that, um, you can have an AR one, 'cause that's what she's zoned, you can have one her, one home per every five acres. So, um, she has about twelve, um, so she can have that second home without having to subdivide or, or, you know, rezone.
So she wasn't trying to sell it, then?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right, yeah, I don't know, it was, everybody thought that she was trying to cut that off and was just gonna put that on the market, but, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, 'cause I know that'll be my next question, is why did she withdraw? That's all I have.
Mr. Deluch, if I may, um, about Honey Ridge, um, I was thinking back on it, the, we, that was me, um, but the reason why we. Yeah, you're welcome, but the reason why we got it is, no, that's not what I'm going for, is, um, I, I wanted to use as a shameless plug to tell the public that just because construction's happening, like, for example, on Blue Jay Road, and it looks like it's complete, we're actually still working on it, um, and there's earth, you know, shoulders that need to be done, and then even once the work is quote-unquote done, there is a punch list that myself, um, construction management, um, goes through, and we look at the roads and see, okay, are we actually okay with it? And, um, thankfully, we got a lot of constituents who call and let us know that there are issues, and, and so I, I love it because it, it helps us.
He worded that, that was awesome.
Well, no, it's, it's, it, I mean, honestly, it's awesome, it's great, it's, it's, um, in the same vein of, uh, Engage Effingham, our app, you know, it, it, we need to streamline the, the process and making sure that the right-of-way and the roads and infrastructure are being taken care of, and, anyway, so, um, I'm using this, um, I guess just to say that, um, just because it looks like the contractor's pulled out, um, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're done contractually with that.
Are we publishing pros, progress anywhere as far as?
Uh, we're, we're going to be soon, there's a new, um, open gov website that we're, um, working on, Lauren is cranking it out, um, and we're gonna be putting our, uh, capital improvement projects on there, um, and being able to put timelines, budgets, exhibits, um, and, and it'll be updated, I think, even with our financing.
So are they done with Honey Ridge?
Um, n- I need to go and, and re-inspect because we had a punch list, and they're, it's, they're going through.
I know they resurfaced the whole road.
Yeah, and there's, there's different parts, um, the, the other part's gonna get picked up in, um, I think this other contract, um, that we just awarded, um.
So the entire Honey Ridge Road, all the way to one nineteen, will be resurfaced?
Yes, sir, it will be, um, this one contract stopped a little short, um, but we're gonna pick up the other, um, portion of it, and then GDOT's doing the, um, D cell lane.
That turned out good.
Yeah.
Went through that.
Um, so we're, we're pretty excited about all the T-Splas, um, money that we've got, and it's definitely helped get all our.
And as for the reports on, uh, on Facebook and, and, uh, and the media and the like, um, we generally like to get them striped, um, uh, at least permanently, get the beds, um, the, uh, the shoulders seated, um, because in the past, we had put out just when they were resurfaced, um, and, uh, we got blown up by folks saying that they did a lousy job, they didn't stripe it right, they, um, they, 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 they didn't see the beds and so on and so forth, so we just wanna get, get most of these roads, um, signed off and inspected, and then we'll just, we'll just start, we'll just start announcing their completions.
Most of the feedback I got, like on Blue Jay, for example, was because of the, the surface and how thick we were going, the shoulders were.
Yeah.
Excessively high. Um, and beyond that, not having the fog lines on, people checking their mail, their mailbox, people use the entire lane now because there's no line.
Right.
Delineating that, so there was a few safety concerns on that, I know there was quite a few accidents that happened on Blue Jay. I never had a problem with it because I stay in the lane, but I guess other people do.
In the county's defense, there was about eleven-foot lanes, and then we made it twelve-foot lanes, and then we put a two-foot paved shoulder, so.
Well, you know when you're riding your bicycle back in the day, and the road would suck you to the edge?
That's right, that's what happens every time you wanna use the whole lane, um, but anyway, we got that striping on, and the earth and shoulders for Blue Jay is starting Monday next week, so, um, that's, we're still under construction, but it's, it's a process that is, um, inconvenient, but.
Yeah, it's just part of the process.
Part of the process, that's right.
Agreed, thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks for Honey Ridge, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for Honey Ridge, man, appreciate it. Commissioner Helmy?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty good, I, I do wanna, uh, a shout-out, I know that probably some of you are very frustrated that you couldn't get some of this zoning behind you, but, um, it's no offense to you, it's, it's really, I know there's a lot of work's done by a lot of people, and I just, I just feel like we need a little bit more, so.
No problem.
It's, it has nothing to do with the, the job that's been done by any means, I don't, don't wanna throw anybody under the bus. If I do, I'll let you know.
Say it, you'll say it to your face.
You'll know, you'll know.